Good evening, and welcome to the Thursday, December 8th, 2011 Goffstown Planning Board Meeting. We're going to start out with a couple of housekeeping items, and then we'll get right into our regular scheduled seven o'clock. I would like to take the minutes from the meeting of November 10th, 2011. Do members of board have any additions, corrections, modifications they wish to bring out, bring to the rest of the board members?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a comment on the minutes. I don't have my copy in front of me, but I notes that I believe I made the first motion. I don't believe I arrived at the meeting until the county was giving its presentation. So, I think someone else made it.
That's possible, but I think we voted you in.
Yeah, you decided since I wasn't here, I would be responsible for it, and yeah, that's what happens when you don't show up.
I'd like the committee they put you on.
Right, yeah.
We'll look into that. I don't know, I don't recollect anything in there, but I do remember you showing up late because you're sitting right here.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments from the members of the board? I need a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Phil, seconded by...
Subject to Gail correcting that point, please.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Seconded by Carlos.
I'm responsible for enough without being blamed for that motion, whatever.
Yes, ma'am. Here is no further comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Right, moving right into our agenda. Brian, you have the floor on the 2011 school impact fee methodology update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your packets, I just copied what you had received the previous time on the schools' impact fee, so you didn't get any updated version of it from the last time, but I do have a final updated version that was just handed to me from Jack. We didn't update any fees or anything like that, any of the data in it. It was pretty much just minor tweaks that had been requested either by the school district or by others. And he did add the page numbers in now, so that will be a little easier to read once we all get the final version. But basically, the fees, as I stated, they're the same as what they were previously presented at. If you can go quickly through what they were again. If I can get to my report.
I tell you what page number, but I don't have that version.
I think it was maybe a separate thing. There it is. Okay, so the proposed fees for single-family detached were increased from forty-seven, forty-eight up to sixty-three, fifty-three per unit. For single-family attached was increased from twenty-one, forty up to three thousand fifteen. For two-unit structures, duplexes basically, it went from twenty-nine, sixty-one up to forty-three, seventy-eight. For multifamily, three-plus units, it went from sixteen hundred and three dollars up to twenty-seven, I'm sorry, twenty-three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And then for manufactured housing, it went from twenty-seven, twenty-four up to forty-three, eighty-four dollars. And I would say the biggest reason for this jump is the cost of construction and the amount of dollars that is needed for school projects. And I think we'll probably hear a little bit more about that from the school later on their presentations tonight for the Bartlett Elementary and Maple Ave schools. But that's essentially the report. I think you've all had a chance to go over it, and basically, we've got a contract that ends with the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission at the end of December. And so if we could wrap this up, that would be great in order to be able to close out that contract and we can finish our dealings with them and move on to something new. And I'll bring the time back to the chairman and the board.
Question?
I'll go around the room, and you can introduce yourself when you ask your questions, starting with Barbara over here. Barbara?
Barbara Griffin, planning board member. I have a question on the manufactured housing, and it might be something changed in this last report. In the intro section, there's the schedule of fees, and the manufactured housing is noted as being unless a part of an approved mobile manufacturing home park. And I understand that has to do with because of the approvals that are in place for residents, the residency of the parks here in town. But if I go to table nine, I don't see that same note as it stands now. And...
I get the same question, Barbara. I don't understand what manufactured housing is.
Well, I mean...
In the terms, because we have one that was just erected in the Grassmere Center, is a manufactured house, was brought in and set up there. That's a manufactured house?
Right, which this would apply to unless it was part of a mobile manufactured home park, and that is not.
And my question is, why would we tax it differently?
Bert, well, to make the example of the one in Grassmere that was just recently rebuilt, I don't believe impact fees were charged on that one because there had been an existing house previously on that. So, that's a little bit different of a case. But typically, a manufactured house would have to go through a mobile home or manufactured home park in order to be allowed. I believe.
No.
No, I don't think...
You can put a manufactured home on its own land, a mobile home on its own land.
The issue is when the manufactured housing goes on a park where it is a different land use, and it's not a lot per se, it's part of a park. And so it's my assumption that that's the distinction because those are generally speaking residentially restricted, and so that they're treated differently for purposes of the school impact fee. Maybe Jack can clarify that if the chair would allow...
Next one, come up and join us.
I'm Chief Planner with the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. And basically, Barbara is absolutely correct. Under your town zoning ordinance, manufactured housing outside of a mobile home park would be assessed an impact fee under your impact fee ordinance as currently administered by the town. And so that's why that note, that asterisk is under that table. We can easily put that asterisk under table nine if that's...
I just wanted it to be consistent, because I understood that if something was recreated in the village of Glen Falls, that would not be getting an impact.
And just to speak briefly to the changes, we had received comments from Ray Labor from the school district that we had actually shown the 2010 enrollment for Glen Lake School at a hundred and sixty students, but it's really a hundred and, it's eighty AM and eighty PM. So, the estimated capacity of that school really is half of what we had before, so it's fifty-three percent, because you have students there in the morning and students there in the afternoon. So, that changed the capacity estimates in the impact fee. But there was no change through that that affected calculations or the results of the impact fee schedule.
Just going around the room. Carlos, do you have any other questions?
Not this time.
Want to introduce yourself?
Carlos Adams, planning board member.
Simone Duhamel, alternate.
Validating chair.
Gail LeBrecq, recording secretary.
Mark Warden.
Do you have any comments? Mark?
No, not on this one.
John?
Mark Ward. I'm John Heike.
Can't be two.
John Heike.
You have any questions at the moment?
Not yet.
Fill the vans of select. Not at the moment.
And I'm Brian Rose, the planning and zoning administrator.
I've been taking care of that little thing. This is a continuation of an open public hearing. Are there any further presentations by the preparer or planning staff?
I think one last. Because Brian made a comment about the significant change in the fees due to cost. Cost is partially one of the factors, but another factor is the fact that there's no, we are currently in a moratorium on state building aid to municipalities, and this impact fee is predicated on the assumption that improvements, improving a capacity to the elementary schools will be made in the future, but it assumes no building aid will come back to the town because it's not available. So, that cost that Brian talked about actually is a lot higher than what it would normally have been. In 2005, when your impact fees were put into place, it included the state building aid. So, that's why, one reason, the fees were a lot less. Plus, there's been some growth in the community. Even though the school-aged children is going down, the actual resident number of students in the school system has increased over the last ten years based on the school, the U.S. Census. So, those are just what I wanted to add, further clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. In continuation of a public hearing, I would ask if anybody wishing to speak in reference the school impact fee, either from the school department or from the public?
Ray Labor, I'm the business administrator at SAU-19. I can't speak for the Goffstown School Board, but what I can report on is that Jack did make a presentation to them during one of their November meetings. Questions were addressed and answered, and the Goffstown School Board did support the fee schedule that was presented to you folks this evening, and they did support all of the assumptions that were made in the study.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public wishing to speak in reference to school impact fees? This is an open public hearing. I see none. I would ask, what is the board's pleasure on this? I can close the public hearing, or do you wish to keep it open for some other issues that might be unresolved? Consensus? Close it?
Close it.
We've talked about this, the impact fees, at a couple of meetings now. I don't see any reason to keep it open.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Members of board, are there any remaining issues before I ask for a vote? Any comments? John? Mark?
Looking for motions, or are you looking for comments?
Just for comments, any comments? Any concerns?
Oh, yeah, this, Mark Warden, I'm concerned about the large increase here, especially if we're trying to encourage development, construction, new housing units, new construction in town. This is going to further drive away developers, so I'd like to make it as builder-friendly as we can, and I'll probably be voting against these increases.
Well?
No, I think, I think it's necessary to, you know, to increase it because, I mean, the impact on the schools is obviously pretty great, even though I don't have school-aged children, but, and I am a builder, so I understand, and unfortunately, that cost is obviously brought on the consumers, but I kind of think it's necessary to do it.
So, Carlos?
None, I mean, further comments?
Barbara?
No further comment.
Any members of the board wishing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the impact fees as presented.
Second. Well, as presented, subject to the asterisk on table nine and the correction for the Glen Lake...
Correct, that's what I meant by as presented through the public hearing process.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, can you clarify what you just said about the Glen Lake? Is that the revised fee we have here in front of us? Do we have those specific numbers?
Correct, with the information that was given to us with the updates and the correction or the addition of the asterisk in table nine that Barbara pointed out.
And on table four, I believe it was table four that was being discussed in regards to the enrollment figures being presented, the Glen Lake school numbers need to be corrected to reflect the, not cumulative attendance, but the capacity attendance that's going on at any one time, which will affect the total elementary number. And I'm presuming an asterisk or a subnote will go on to explain that that's a half-day program, so that while more students are at the school for purposes of capacity, that's what's operating at any given time. And you just, Jack is nodding his head that a footnote will go in.
It's already in. There's a note, there's a note in the text of it, and it, I'm sure it also shows up in that table, right?
Okay.
I can see the note in the text here, and I didn't, I'm not to the table yet. At the very bottom of table four. Bold, red. There we go.
Yes, I see it.
So, that has been corrected.
I personally am not in favor of these rates. I would vote negative after the vote.
Tax increase.
They don't believe in the tax increase, period. John?
Question?
Yeah?
Could you give me an idea of how many properties in the past, let's say, either year or calendar year paid impact fees, and assuming the projections would be probably similar in this next coming year? Would we know, but assuming that there's no construction boom or, I don't think it's too much...
I don't believe, I don't believe we've had any presentation as to the monies collected in the last fiscal year. That's another reason why I won't vote for the increase, because there's been no presentation as to the funds collected and how they were expended, or how they are going to be expended. Brian?
I can, I can address that, Mr. Chair, if you'd like. Over the past year, we had approximately fifteen single-family homes built, and if you calculate the old fee, which is forty-seven hundred some odd dollars, I'll round it up to five thousand. Five thousand times fifteen is approximately seventy-five thousand, so it would be a little less than seventy-five thousand that's been collected over the past year for single-family homes. There was in addition to that, I believe, one duplex that was built. So, it's, it's not a huge number of homes that have been built, but the way that funds have built up over the past several years, that's allowed the school district to be able to use those funds, and actually, they've spent it on creating these architectural and engineering studies for Bartlett and Maple Avenue schools. Over the past year, they've used up probably three hundred and some odd dollars, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Seven.
Three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars for the purposes of doing these architectural and engineering studies. And all of that money came from impact fees, so it didn't have to come out of a town warrant or anything else to raise up that money, which...
It did come out of the school budget.
Pardon?
It would have been appropriated in the school budget, correctly?
It, it gets appropriated prior and approved to be able to be spent like that, and then later it's spent.
Do you know what the current fund balance is?
It's small. They've used most of it. I wouldn't know the exact fund balance, but it's fairly small.
Anybody else have a question? See, now call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion by Phil to approve the new fees, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Short hands. All those in favor, say aye. Four, three, motion carries. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, I believe, is the master plan update in regards to the energy chapter. I believe that's why Jillian has come to the table. Perhaps the chair had something different in mind?
Um, yeah. I did, actually. I was curious. Why did I miss that on my agenda?
It's kind of a one-liner.
It's the one in bold here.
Indented, got a margin.
You know, one of those things that's right in front of you that you can't see?
If it doesn't have a two in front of it, so I know it's the second item on the agenda. Now I know. Okay. I should go back to school, probably. Anyways, you have the floor, Jillian.
Ready for me?
Yeah.
All right. I'm here for the energy planning for Goffstown. I was here and last in October, just for an overview of the process, and tonight, I'd like to get started by developing some goals for the chapter with the board. And I have a brief PowerPoint presentation just to get some ideas flowing on the importance of energy planning, and then some example goals that we can discuss to see if you're interested in having those as the town of Goffstown. The first slide talks about the economic health and safety impacts for energy planning. Scientists are in almost universal agreement that human activities, notably fossil fuel combustion, are causing global surface temperatures to increase, and this warmer climate has potentially serious consequences for ecosystems, coastal areas, public health, and extreme weather events. So, some of the economic impacts in New Hampshire could include tourism, forestry and forest products, maple syrup, skiing, fishing, agriculture, municipal costs and loss of jobs and revenue. Some of the public health and safety impacts include heat-related illnesses, asthma and respiratory illnesses, extreme weather events resulting in loss of life and property, health impacts, and safety concerns. So, that's just some of the background on importance. Continuing with the importance of energy planning, the second slide has the sources of greenhouse gas emissions by sector for New Hampshire in 2009, and New Hampshire generates more than ninety percent of total greenhouse gases from energy production and use. And you can see that transportation and electric power are the largest sources for greenhouse gas emissions in New Hampshire. The next slide has some background on statutes that relate to energy in New Hampshire. RSA-672 talks about proper regulations to enhance the public health, safety, and general welfare, and encourage the appropriate and wise use of land. It also talks about how proper regulations encourage energy-efficient patterns of development, use of solar energy, including adequate access to direct sunlight for solar energy uses, and the use of other renewable forms of energy and energy conservation. Therefore, zoning ordinances should not unreasonably limit the installation of solar, wind, or other renewable energy systems, or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of renewable energy, except necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. RSA-674 talks about the master plan and including an energy section within it. RSA-38 talks about enabling an energy commission, and there are also some others which talk about permitting communities to adopt stricter measures than the New Hampshire State Building Code. And then RSA-6, RSA-72, which permits municipalities to offer property tax exemption on solar, wind, and wood heating energy systems. That's some of the statutes. The next slide is on the New Hampshire Climate Action Plan, and the 2009 New Hampshire Climate Action Plan was developed by the state authorized bipartisan climate change policy task force that was composed of representatives from all sectors of the New Hampshire community. And the task force concluded that the most significant reductions in both emissions and costs will come from substantially increasing energy efficiency in all sections of the economy, continuing to increase sources of renewable energy, and designing our communities to reduce reliance on automobiles for transportation. And they recommend sixty-seven specific actions to achieve five different goals, and those are listed here. They are to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from buildings, electric generation, and transportation; protect natural resources to maintain the amount of carbon sequestered; support regional and national initiatives to reduce greenhouse gases; develop an integrated education outreach and workforce training program; and to adapt to existing potential climate change impacts. The next slide lists energy goals, the New Hampshire Climate Action Plan goals that we just went over, and then some example energy chapter goals from other energy chapters around the state, and then some other ideas for energy goals, which include long-term energy goals for efficiency, conservation, independence, and cost savings; reducing municipal or community energy use by a certain percent within the first year, and then targets for subsequent years; greenhouse gas emission goals, which would be for aligning municipal goals with the state goals; promoting public and private participation in programs to reduce energy costs; and planning for efficient growth and development patterns, and also encouraging business owners and residents to develop energy-efficient improvement plans. So, my goal tonight is to get some ideas from you for goals for the chapter for Goffstown. So, I'm going to open it up for discussion, and if anybody has any ideas they want to throw out, now would be the time. If not, I can go through some, and we can sort of have a yes or no, if we want these or we don't want these.
You don't want to go through this group.
Yes, Barbara?
I guess I'd like to ask Jillian what her sort of timeframe for feedback on this, because I'm looking at this, and while it's certainly a planning issue, I see this as certainly something that I think Phil, our board of selectmen, should be involved in, especially since I know that there have been energy audits of the building done under their direction, and that there have been other changes made in utility uses for municipal buildings. And quite honestly, absent municipal buildings, I'm not really quite sure how we would, we can put suggestions in, but we certainly are not, I'm certainly not envisioning ordinances requiring our community members in their individual homes to be doing anything, so...
I would hope not.
So, I, you know, I just sort of, because when I see reduced municipal energy use by, I mean, I think that's really something that the board of selectmen can probably have a pretty good voice on, as compared to this group that hasn't been involved in those kind of discussions before. Jillian, what are you looking for for timeframe for completing this?
I was hoping to have a draft by the end of January to bring it to the board.
Because sometimes when things go to the board of selectmen, we don't, they don't always reach a conclusion right away.
Especially now with budgets.
Right, so that's why I wanted to know. Well, the budgets from the board of selectmen's standpoint should be pretty close to done now, right? Pretty much close to public hearing session now? Oh, okay.
Okay. Pass on that one, Barbara, okay?
Okay, sorry. Thought I remembered the calendar for those times. Okay. So, the end of January, you're looking for some, to try and have a draft back?
Yes.
So, it's about a month and a half-ish? One of the things that I noticed in there that I thought would be a good idea is to have a goal to formulate an energy commission or an energy committee for the town.
The board of selectmen would probably like to do that.
Well...
Barbara, don't volunteer the selectmen, please.
I'm looking, he smiled when he said it. I thought he was...
Hey, I'm not in favor of an energy commission, I'll tell you right now. We've got enough commissions and committees in town.
Really?
I, I think it's not inappropriate that the planning board establish some...
Okay.
...characterization as to energy conservation in the master plan. I don't think we want to be the energy... I don't think we want to be the energy police. I think there are, there are certain methodologies in which we can promote that, and the things in the projects that we see, we can, we can ask those questions. I think we can legitimately ask those questions, especially when it comes to things like site lighting and daylighting, energy usage. I think in terms of the public buildings, I think a lot of that's been done, and studies have been done in advance of this. Hopefully, that over time, they're implementing some of those, if not all of them. And they could stand to be updated from time to time, if new technologies or whatever come up to, to, to the forefront. I think I recently saw an article about a fire station in New Hampshire that installed solar panels for, oh, on a fire station. I mean, there's all kinds of funding, and there's also funding vehicles. Do you ever get involved in funding vehicles, or identifying funded, the funding vehicles, for some of these items that might be considered by the municipality?
We can do that through the energy chapter, yeah.
Well, I think, actually, to that point, that's a good reason to have an energy commission. That, that actually gets volunteers that are focused on that area anyway. That gives them something to actually work on if there is a grant available, and they can get all the information together that need, that they need to do.
I'd rather initially probably maybe see it as a clearinghouse for information for the community, rather than being, I'm not in favor of more commissions either. If it came to be that it was a major situation, then maybe quite possibly we would consider that, if there was a major activity that the town wanted to pursue. But I don't see that happening at the moment.
Well, maybe we could, the Board of, we could talk about whether or not we wanted to have a point person in the town as to energy issues, whether it's our building inspector, or assistant town administrator, maybe, who's involved in a lot of those things.
We can look into that.
I think it's just keeping informed and keeping the information available to start with. Something takes off, and you can promote some things, it might be appropriate to take it further.
I will say that I've been working on energy chapters in a couple other towns in the region, and their goals have been pretty broad. Things such as improve the energy efficiency in the municipal buildings, period. And that can, and recommendations can fall under there, specific to what that will entail. Others are plan for efficient growth and development patterns, increase community awareness, and educate residents on reducing energy costs and consumption.
I think the community awareness is a big thing. Can't be easily promoted here in the master plan, as to some of the things people might want to be doing, I don't know. I think you probably have a better handle, Jillian, on those various tasks and topics that might want to be in there.
Yeah.
Maybe a shopping list of those topics might be appropriate.
What I'll do is I'll take the goals, and then through the energy chapter, we'll formulate specific recommendations underneath the goals for achieving those goals.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, John.
Could I ask a question to you?
Certainly.
If your, if your group or association that you're part of is, is large enough, because energy is such an important part of life for all of us, perhaps, as well as looking how to reduce, also looking for alternative forms of energy. Like renewable oils that we can grow in plants, for instance, that we can have refined into heating oils. And, and other, other things that I know that are being looked at in some other committees throughout the state. So there's not only just cutting back the light bulbs and solar energy, but also adding, getting us off the heating oil plan that we have with fossil fuels.
To perhaps.
Renewable type oils.
Something like, improve the energy efficiency of municipal buildings, as well as.
Home heating oil, let's say through soy oil, or through
Yeah.
hemp oil, or there's all kinds of oils that we can burn
Yeah.
that are very efficient, and that we can actually grow and become a product and a, and a job in.
Maybe something like exploring alternative forms of energy, or renewable energy form.
Locally grown energy that we can generate without
Are you recommending that the Planning Board endorse growing hemp locally? Is that what you're saying?
No.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Mark, stop right there, please.
No, but I am, no, but I'm just, I'm just suggesting that there, she may want to look into alternative.
Jillian, on the, on page three, there was a, paragraph number two was protect natural resources. It would be a great thing if, if we talked about natural resources in Goffstown, what are they that we want to be aware of, and what do we want to be protecting as a natural resource? Should be clearly identified in that document. Because if, if we're protecting a natural resource, is it something that we need, need to deal with? Might be, I don't know, might be water, it might be trees.
I want to point out, what you brought up is a very good, important thing to have in there, because the resources that we have, we have are twenty-one cornerstones that were identified that are in the master plan. A lot of them are views that we have. So we would want to make sure that some of these things that we're going to be looking, that she mentioned earlier, not to put restrictions on, such as windmills. They might be blocking some of those views that, we just want to make sure that there's no conflict there.
I think we already have a tower ordinance on windmills, don't we?
No, 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 what I'm saying, when you're saying to identify the re- the natural resources that we have, twenty-one cornerstones are pointed out in the master plan.
Okay.
Some of those are views.
Okay.
Okay? And we just want to make sure that if we're not going to be putting anything on to restrict things like windmills, that we want to at least identify where the views are, so there might be some area that we might consider be sensitive as far as the windmills obstructing a view that we might feel is important.
What, you mean based upon some of the impact studies that have been done on some of the wind generation facilities, like in the
No, perhaps I'm not quite making myself clear. If we're trying to identify resources that we have in the town, that we want to protect, that's why you identify them. And if we look at some of those, we may not want to have windmills in certain areas, once we identify some.
Just, I think what we're talking about, Jillian, is, is looking for other energy, you know, savings and alternatives while preserving the recognized resources of the town, as exemplified by the twenty-one items identified in the cornerstone.
Thank you.
Correct.
Does Goffstown have a small wind turbine ordinance?
I think you'll need to sort of look into it. I, I have a question for Jillian, at the chair's permission?
Yes.
And this is a follow-up to the commission issue, which I still think ought to be brought to the Board of Selectmen to see if they might be interested in establishing it. Because that would be, I think, under their peer review more than this board's peer review. But I do, I would like, in regards to the grant issue that, that Brian was talking about, because I know Southern New Hampshire Planning is always looking for grants for us, because we constantly get emails about available grants. You were smiling at the constant emails, weren't you? Some of those grant applications, I know for other types of things, agencies look for a designated party. So can you just sort of find out in regards to working on these, whether in regards to grants that you've seen on these type of projects? Because I know we've gotten emails about grants available to do energy projects before, whether or not having a designated person or commission, I mean, we could have like an ADA compliance commission, maybe, helps in the grant application process? Because I, I know that does some, sometimes ratchet you up in the standing for grant applications. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just to answer Jillian's question, to, I, I've looked through the ordinance, and we don't have any wind turbine ordinance currently. Also, Mr. Chair, could I just?
Didn't the state write a chapter in the RSA about wind generation?
Yeah.
I think there is a chapter, a new chapter in the RSA, how we, how we can work with that, and how we can operate with it, in some fashions, I believe. I'm not sure exactly, I remember seeing it.
Yeah, it's within the past few years, I believe, that they've.
So I think there is in the RSA, certain paragraphs now, in reference to renewable energy resources. That should be noted in there, probably.
Yeah.
Simone, you've been very quiet. No comment? Any input?
I guess I'm, I'm just kind of, if I may ask.
Oh, you can ask any, ask away.
Really, what is the objective with the town? Like, I, I guess I'm just a little slow catching on concerning this whole energy thing. And then what does that really have to do with?
So this would be forming the vision for the energy chapter, the goals that the town would support and want to move forward, so that we can come up with recommendations in order to make those goals happen.
If I can just, if, with the chair's permission, just cut background information. We go back to statutes that require lots of things, and one of them is the master plan. And with the adoption of a, one of the statutes that she listed, the master plan shall include, at a minimum, a section on energy. So really, what we're talking about is a requirement to update our master plan with an energy section. And so Southern New Hampshire Planning has been taking the lead on that for a lot of member communities, so we can get in compliance with it. And it says we're supposed to have a statement of policy on the conservation of energy. So I think that's why you're talking about, a lot of towns just did these very broad
Yeah.
statements, because of the same questions you're having about the whole thing. I don't know whether that cleared it up or not, because it does sort of say, why are we doing it, sort of, was your question.
Thanks.
Thanks, that helps, that's helpful.
Okay.
Any other members of the board have a, have a query, a question, or sites, examples, or whatever? Brian?
Uh, just as the discussion's kind of been floating around, something that I've been thinking about, at least, is, you know, obviously, the future is coming, and electric cars are sort of out there. And do we want to sort of be proactive in that sense, and, and encourage alternative types of vehicular power? And what could we do in our master plan to sort of, you know, encourage that type of stuff? And, you know, possibly allow it in our ordinance somehow, for, for charging stations and that kind of thing, for these new cars that are coming out?
Okay?
Oh, boy. Yes, Phil.
Well, if we're going to allow charging stations,
Oh, I knew this was coming.
why don't we look at allowing propane or liquid natural gas places for cars that want to go to those conversions also, then?
I don't know where the technology's going in those various areas, but, yeah.
I think abroad, I think Jillian can get the idea for some broad goals in regards to providing resources for people who use alternative resources for, and we can make that pretty broad, and.
Yeah, it can be broad. It can be broad.
Mr. Chair.
At the moment, yes.
I'd just like to say that it was, if you're looking for the RSA for towns to regulate wind turbines, it was HB three one zero, and it was passed in two thousand and eight.
Okay. I know I've seen it before, I just have to look up.
I think that's what you're talking about.
So in terms of definitive goals, I've got something along the lines of increased community awareness on reducing energy consumption, and increasing energy efficiency, and also exploring alternative forms of energy and renewable energy. Would that be, I'm assuming that would be in regards to municipal energy use, and we're not, or are we talking about residential and municipal?
Either. I would also suggest, Jillian, that in the course of your preparations, document that, and I'm sure you will, have a couple meetings with Brian, and the two of you collectively will, and maybe with some of the staff members, come up with some other ideas, I'm sure you will.
Sure.
In the writing of this document.
Yeah.
So I certainly is encouraged with the, the action plan that you've got out for us here. We look forward to having to work with Brian over the next month or two, and we find a document that says, here it is. Other members of the board?
Yes.
Yes.
I would only add to that, that it's not the good time to be putting extra burdens and regulations on homeowners' businesses. So as long as everything there is purely voluntary, no penalties, no extra cost to people that might make these changes, just suggestions, I think that's okay. But I'd hate for us to add insult to injury by increasing regulation.
We can do a lot of encouraging and educating.
These are goals.
These are only goals, not directives and mandates, please.
I think they're laudable goals.
Sometimes they work better than mandates.
I just have a final, I love the little, it's not a logo, but I love the little light, state light bulb. And I just want you to know, I'm, I'm going to be thinking about how to do it with the Unconunics without making it look like they're on fire, so.
Oh, yeah.
That's very cool.
The lights will always be red up there.
It's the ETAP logo.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
It's very cool. Thank you, Jillian.
Thank you.
John has suggested that we have a ring form on lower.
Okay. Thank you, Jillian.
Thank you.
I wanted to talk to you again.
Jillian, there's an extra one, do you want this back?
Now we're down to new business. And Brian, do we want to try to capture these presentations, or the next two as one? Let him have the floor. We'll, we'll be easy on him? Or do we take them one at a time, and have at them?
Up to you, Mr. Chair, however you want to do it. You can ask them what they want to do.
How they wish to present both at once? Or you don't want to do one at a time, Fred? Okay, one at a time. Brian, can you introduce MAP seventeen law one eighty-two? That's a site plan hearing for a proposed addition to the existing Bartman Elementary School, building along with associated onsite improvements. Town of Goffstown, Goffstown School District owners, six eighty-nine Mass Road Zone Commercial. Brian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I put a very small memo in your packet that I mailed to you, basically stating that, you know, when, when a school or any other kind of governmental use wants to develop or use their property, they aren't necessarily required to go through the same process of Planning Board approval as a typical use would. And so what this is tonight is a, a review of the proposed plans that the school district has come up with, and complimentary comments to them. And it's also a public hearing where we've notified the butters of the schools that they will be coming in to present their plans. But past that, we issue non-binding written comments to, to the school district, and, and they do what they will with the comments. And hopefully, they listen to us. But, but again, it's a non-binding review of their plans. So we're, we're here trying to basically help them and give them the best possible development scheme that they can come up with. So.
You, you also saying, Brian, that the, the butters were notified, but did the public notice in newspaper also, as a public hearing?
Uh, it did not go in the newspaper. That's typical of a public hearing notice. Uh, I'm sorry, you know what, I'm sorry, it did go in the newspaper.
Okay, so it was a public notice, okay.
I apologize.
Just want to make sure, before we get into this.
In my brain, I had to work it out.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Well.
Do you have a copy of that?
Uh, I can.
Because I didn't see it.
I can obtain it.
I'm assuming that it's within the newspaper, we've been told it was public, properly noticed. The chair will recognize that it was properly noticed. Can I have your name, please?
Matthew Burke. A butter thirty-nine Loria Street.
Okay, thank you.
No, it goes into the, it's not in the Goffstown News, I don't know if that's the paper you're looking at, but it goes into the Union.
Okay. All right. So we'll assume that that matter is clarified. Is there somebody here from the applicant wishing to make the presentation? And that's official, Fred, I've known. And that's official, Fred, I've known you for 30 years, so. You have the floor, Fred.
Mr. Chair, my name is Fred Matasuski, I'm with CMK Architects, we're based in Manchester. I also wish to introduce Nicole Dequette. She is with T F Moran, based in Bedford, our civil engineering consultant. I think we had decided to begin with Bartlett.
Yeah.
So just by, I guess, some background on what it is that we are trying to do with this existing school facility. We were retained by the school district to address a program of additions and renovations to the existing school. The existing school was constructed in two generations of construction, 1922. It's the core building and then a second wing along the front, along Mast Road, constructed in 1966. Lately added to the rear of the, to the rear of the site is a modular building that contains a library and some offices. School is cramped for space right now. The program addressed the express intent of providing six additional teaching stations. That's not classrooms, and we will not see an increase in student population. But with the numbers of dedicated teaching stations for special ed, OTPT, a number of these services are being offered in shared spaces right now. And we're looking to improve the delivery of education. In meeting with the committee and going through various schemes and how the, we could address the program that was drawn up by the committee and the board, we made a decision that the 1922 structure posed a bit of an impediment to a well-designed finished product. And decided that in its place to construct a two-story wing off the rear. Now, the interesting bit about this is that the, the building footprint is about the same. In fact, maybe marginally minimally larger than the old building footprint. However, because of its increased efficiency, it's able to offer much more to the delivery of education. So to recap, there is no increase in student population. Staff is there. And to repeat, I guess, we are vastly improving the delivery of education. But you're here to talk about the site issues that this proposal is bringing to the site, and to that I'll ask Nicole.
I do have new plans, but I only have six copies. It just gives you some additional information.
I think the members of board can share probably, I hope they can.
What's the date on yours?
These have a progress from November 30th. So the existing conditions plans are still the same, it's just the, the closed stuff.
These are six colored renderings such as shown on the 24 by 36 inch board.
This is a sparkly demolished.
Thank you.
They're going to tear this place out.
That's what's on the board.
Yeah, we'll take one for the record, so that we have one for the record. I'll put this in Patty's car.
Nicole Dequette with T F Moran, Fred at R E J Smith. But what we're proposing on the site, Fred did touch on a little bit, we're proposing to remove the auxiliary building back here that's being used as classrooms and bring that space into the new space. This is the portion of the building that's being demoed, right in there. We are expanding into here, into this area, and removing six spaces along here. There is a stor, there's another storage container back here too, and that's going to be removed too. So we're, we're not only bringing classroom space inside this building, we're bringing storage space that is being stored in storage containers or trailers outside of the building. The other thing that we, we're looking at is the parent drop-off is awfully short. You can only get two or three cars in there at a time. So one of the things that they, that the school had asked us to do is extend this parent drop-off to get a little bit more queue off of Mast Road. So we're not, we're not changing the circulation pattern. The, the parent drop-off would still be coming in the front. The school buses will still be going from Mast Road to Higgins. That's, that will not change. What is changing is that that building's coming in here. Now we have a loading area in this area instead of that steeply sloped parking space there. And we do have handicap entrance on the side as well as the front where the parent drop-off is. So like, as you can see, we have plenty more queuing within the front. Now, as far as the drainage goes for this new section, we're really not adding a whole lot of impervious area. It's probably just about this much area of added impervious. So what we're doing is we're proposing, we're depressing this landscaped island in here to kind of collect some of the water. Now, if it does overflow, it will out, overflow this corner, and there's a catch basin right here to catch it in, in Mast Road. So that's how we're collecting the water there. There was, we did get a couple of comments from, from Megan, and we're currently working on addressing some of those issues with her. Mostly on maple, as I understand. I know that there's some snow storage comments on there that she'd like to work out a little bit with the school. But most of the issues were for maple school. Far as everything else, snow storage will be the same as it, it is today. Snow storage will be somewhat in this island, and then this island over here. But, you know, if we have another snow, a winter like we did last year, the snow is, is going to be removed, have to be removed from the site. It's very common with urban, urbanized areas such as this one. And if we had the room to snow, to, to add more green space, we would have, we added a little bit here. But where this is an existing school, an existing lot, and everything else is developed around it, we really didn't have too much options on this school. So if you have any questions, hopefully you're.
I have just a question, just a simple question. In the course of enlarging the school, the population stays the same, of the students primarily. And that's, that's good. I'm asking about staff. How many staff are going to be here between teachers, paraprofessionals, administrative staff, and where do they all park?
They're all accommodated now on the site, and we are maintaining those parking spaces. So on any given day, I think we show 30 spaces and that accommodates the staff right now.
Good, thank you. Members of the board, we have any specific questions of the applicant? I'll start with you, Barbara.
Can somebody point to the area that was new slash reconstructed in the last addition to this building?
Oh, the front administrative office, Barbara? The little addition they put on the front in front of the gym?
Yeah, it's a tiny addition right up here.
Well, what about the one then before that? Because there was a fairly major renovation to Bartlett, and I know that this is ancient history. A while ago with the playground was reset and parking was reset. And I don't remember when that was, but it was more than just a little office upgrade.
That was, that was some time ago, Barbara, because that was prior to Mike becoming a member of the board.
Well, maybe I'm older than you, Alan, because I remember it, so that's what I'm trying to get at. I'll admit it, I could be the oldest one here, I don't know. And I'm sort of asking because I remember when that renovation occurred, and it was sort of said that we'd never be doing another renovation at Bartlett. So I was wondering whether the demolition and new building addition was going to do any of that? Because I know we repaved, that we reconfigured that site because there was a lot of issue at the times with the butters because the playground was going to move, and they had some concerns about what was going to be happening with activity on the site. And I guess you don't have any, and so, am I correct in saying that that gray is all paving that exists today?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And is, what's the distinction between the dark gray and the light gray?
Well, let me correct that. First of all, right now, there's a drop-off loop that comes in right here and empties out right about here.
Right.
So this is
New paving.
new pavement.
Okay.
All the rest of this does exist right now, the existing wing is back in here. But this new pavement is necessary in order to satisfy the construction of the, of the building. But it exists today as hard surface.
It's for removal of the, removal of the building, of the storage trailer and all the propane, you know, the propane tanks that are around there. And the, and removal of that back wing and construction.
So what percentage of this, of the new footprint, can you just put your pen over where the, draw the pen over the current footprint? Because we said, the current?
Runs back in through here.
Right, okay, so sort of the back end of the building and the, the L piece are new.
Right.
What percent?
But what also exists, and we don't show on this plan, is a modular building back here that takes care of the library and some offices. In fact, I have a draw.
All right, so what, what percentage of the new footprint then, recognizing that some of the new footprint is taking care of a modular building that's right there now, is sort of storage and administrative space?
Virtually none. I mean, we have some interior storerooms for the faculty for the school in here.
Okay.
We have a small storage room that is located right here for outside vehicles, the lawn mowers, et cetera. But the administration is already taking care of, we're not doing anything to the administrative area. This is purely academic space.
Well, because I guess I heard in the presentation that it was going to be storage, so that was part of my question.
Well, there's, there's a storage, there's a storage trailer that's on the back corner.
Right, that he just mentioned, right.
And I'm sure a lot of the storage area will be maintained within the classrooms too, because they're going to be a little bit more efficient, they're going to be able to hold more of that.
And we have a server room, we have some storage rooms that are located in here, but they're glorified closets.
Like a lot of offices, okay. And I guess in, and I want to ask again about the snow storage, because I read Megan's comments quickly, because we got these tonight. And it would appear that snow storage is not just a little something for discussion, it's a major issue. And in fact, just so you know, when we have private applicants in front of us, snow storage is one of our favorite things to sort of say, where is it going to be, put it on the plan? And we've been requiring people to say that if it, what are we giving them, 48 hours to remove it? We've done it a couple of times, that if it's, if the snow storage is providing a hazard. So you just pointed to that little tiny green space as being storage. And I don't drive a plow truck, but I'm pretty sure you couldn't even get half of that driveway drop-off area on that green space. So I guess, and I know that, you know, emergency snow has to be carted off. But is that really what the site has been designed for, for snow storage? Is that little green space right there, or is there anyplace else?
Snow storage is always an issue in an urban area. I think that's going to have to be a housekeeping issue that the school district will have to take up with their, with a contractor. I know right now DPW plows the area, but a contractor to take the, the snow away.
Yep, that was, Barbara, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Megan. But does DPW plows and removes the snow from the school?
Yes.
End of discussion.
Not if you read Megan's comments, it's not, because it's a major issue that they have to go back.
That's right, it's a major issue, but I don't think it's, if, if the town has a contract to do that work.
There's no contract. There's been many discussions about whether or not the school district should be charged for plowing services or whether or not they continue to be provided. Okay, I just am asking about snow storage, because it's obviously an issue for DPW.
I believe it is too.
He was, mentioned the contractor, not me, I knew DPW plowed it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I have the same concerns with snow storage, especially when we're talking about a narrow strip and we're asking that area to serve dual purposes, both snow storage and collecting and presumably providing some level of treatment to runoff from impervious areas prior to discharging it to a closed drainage system. I presume to have surface water somewhere. Because those, those can't happen at the same time, because the time you need the, the collection of stormwater the most is in the spring, and the problem, snow piles are probably still going to be there. So I have that concern as well, and share that concern with Barbara. But I was asked by the Conservation Commission to bring their concerns here tonight. So, and they're the same concerns here as they are maple ass, so I'll address them both at the same time. Is what are the existing runoff patterns and what will be the runoff patterns once we're done? In other words, is the paving going to be changed? Where does the water flow to? In this case, there's a brook out back that's a resource
Yes.
of concern. Where, where does drainage go? And is there any treatment provided prior to discharging to, to any of their surface waters?
Right now, we have surface water that just sheets to the brook. We are replacing some of that pavement with rooftop, with roof drains, which we then run underground to the brook. So there is no net change in runoff. Perhaps Nicole can better address some of these issues.
Yeah, I mean, the, the grading of the pavement in the back isn't changing. The, the same area that's going into that brook will be going to that brook after this development happens. The only difference is this, this area here. And we have, we have graded that so that if there's a snowbank there, it does run along the edge of the pavement. So we have graded it out along there. But in, in larger storm events, in the spring, when you don't have the snowmelt, at least we have this area that will kind of.
So if I understand it correctly, I mean, obviously, there's going to be a lot of pavement torn up and there'll be some repaving done. Will the overall site be repaved or regraded in any way, the back areas?
It's, this is all going to be regraded to existing, repaved to existing.
So there won't be any change in drainage pattern?
And you're actually, the dark gray is what you anticipate actually having to repave? The rest of it you don't even want to touch, right?
Right.
Okay.
What's the newest section of the playground used for right now, the, the light gray area?
This is actually a two-level playground.
Yeah, beyond that, north of that, yeah.
It's just hard surface play right now.
Could possibly the snow be brought back there?
I think that would be, I, I, this is probably where they store it for back here, but this would be hard to go back there.
Mark? Yeah, following up on Colossus' reference to the, the brook, they, that's wetlands, considered wetlands, right? So are the, does this new building in the back there encroach on the setback requirement at all?
I believe that in current, in terms of setback, wetlands, I don't believe it would conform to our ordinance today. And I don't believe they have to comply with our ordinance today. But I don't know about best management practices or any, whether there's any state drainage applications. They have to comply with state and federal laws.
But they don't have to conform with local ordinance? Why is that?
That is correct, by state statute.
Because they're a school?
Because they're a government.
They're a government entity, considered a government.
If it was a private school, we would have to
Of course.
comply. But as a public school, it isn't.
Do as we say, not as we do.
But as, as far But as, as far, one of the things, and I, I apologize, I, I haven't shown the erosion control measures, the locations on the plan yet. So, and that is something that I need to, to show. But we will be using during construction stuff like silt sock, because we can't really use silt fence on this because we're keeping the pavement. So it's that, um, it's that tubing that's filled with mulch. We'll be using that on the, placing that on the pavement so that the construction sediment doesn't affect the abutters or the brook. And what I'm trying, what I'm looking at is instead of tying the roof drains directly to the brook, there is a catch basin on Higgins, right at the corner of Higgins and the site, that I'd like to try to see if we can connect to.
Okay. John?
No questions right now.
Phil?
Well, I have, I have a couple of just concerns with, I guess, the, and again, this is, I just, I just saw these because I didn't realize that these were here before. With Megan's concern about the, the drainage and, in reading that and looking at that back of the site, I know there were some issues in the past. But is it a possibility to put underground drainage? I believe we had that at the Rite Aid, I'm, I'm not sure if it was the Rite Aid site where they had some underground storage. You remember, McCollus, if it was the underground, if it was the Rite Aid?
They used groundwater recharge in some of the drainage patterns on several projects in town. But I don't see any here. But I'm gonna defer to Megan. She was asking to make a comment. Megan, do you have some comments?
I just had a quick question. I was curious, you guys were talking about the brook. Was that, was that flagged by a certified wetland scientist as part of the survey of the site?
Fred, on the original, the original Todd plant, was that flagged?
That, I'm not sure off the top of my head right now without looking at the whole utility plan, but I believe that's just an outfall for closed drainage. I don't know if it has a source point of a brook or stream somewhere, or it's really just all closed drainage that goes to that point. And it's, you know, it's more like a drainage swirl, but I guess I was just curious if it was flagged. It's just a question.
I don't have the answer to that question, but I can definitely find it out. It is labeled on the plan, on the Todd plant as brook.
That's why I didn't know someone flagged it.
Yeah.
When we saw the pizza place on the corner of College Drive, on College Road, there was picked up on that some drainage that went down through the parking lots and the side streets and ended up in that area. So I think it's collecting a good deal of that hillside coming down College Road, coming out there. It's been there for as long as I've been in town, which is thirty some-odd years. Yes, sir. Oh, excuse me. Haven't opened it in the public yet. Yes, Collis?
Yeah, was there any consideration given to pervious pavement technologies, not in the travel areas, but at least in the parking aisles?
In, in this, and, and I know we haven't gone into it, but in Maple, it really would not be a good idea. Those do require a lot of maintenance, which is fine for a private developer, but for a school that, for a school, I mean, you have to sweep those or vacuum them, I think, twice a year. And some places, I know that we do have porous pavement that we did in Manchester at the elderly housing for Southern New Hampshire Services. They had to buy their own vacuum machine to maintain their porous pavement. And if it's not maintained, you have issues with it because there's no other drainage.
So it's do as I say, not as I do.
Yeah, on this one, it, it wouldn't be maintained. So it wouldn't be right for me to propose it. As far as underground storage, and, and plus, with the amount of pavement that we're proposing, it, it really isn't economical to go porous pavement unless they were considering ripping up all of it. With the underground storage, it is, it's, the underground storage, again, it's high maintenance and it is a big cost. And unfortunately, that's not something that's in the school's budget at this point. They, they wanna try to enhance the, the space for the students as much as possible, and that's what they're trying to do. We can, I can look into, and I haven't talked to Fred about this, is putting, talking to Megan, I know there's a low spot that you mentioned towards the back, and we may be able to put a catch basin or that, or something to tie it into the municipal system. That is something that we could look into doing.
Any other members of the board a question, because they're gonna open up a public hearing? Seeing none. Are there any members of the public, which is speaking in reference to a proposal to, for the addition of Bartlett School? Yes, sir.
Hi, Matt Burke, 39 Loria Street, Abutter. Can I point a few things out on your map?
Certainly.
They own this property right here. Comes down to here to Loria Street. Okay?
Yes.
Where they came up with this as a brook is beyond me. Dries up in the middle of summer, thus is a rainstorm. It doesn't run constantly. Nothing grows in the bottom of this. Because the catch basins from Mast Road, the parking lot of Bartlett Street, of Bartlett School, have polluted my property. With the salt, antifreeze, oil, and so on. So it's not a brook. And everything that comes out of this area, comes out of this area, goes to my property.
All right. So do we have any drainage plans or anything, Megan, showing the drainage pattern and the catch basins and piping that go into that area?
I didn't bring a sniper's.
But you do have it.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, I sure thought of that to print a whole, I did it for the other school, but I didn't think to do it for this one, to show the whole system.
That's fine, but you can work with the engineer and point out that information and they can make their judgment calls as, as they see fit.
Oh, and I have another comment too, about their, about their snow removal.
Yes.
When the snow gets too bad, they just bring it over here and plow it over the fence onto my property.
We'll see if we can, over the fence, is there a fence along that property now?
Yeah, there's a fence right in here. No.
It's like an eight-foot-high fence.
Now, your Conservation Committee has no problem coming down and busting my nuts
Okay.
about dumping snow into my ravine when I'm trucking it in. But there's no problem with the school dumping it into my ravine.
We'll take and take a look at that. Okay, thank you.
All right?
Any other members of the public have a comment or observation or a question they'd like to ask? Seeing none. Members of the board, do we wanna keep this public hearing open, or do we wanna just close it and move forward?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Brian.
I'd like to just address something that was said earlier in the meeting.
Yes.
The architect said that there was about thirty spaces and that that's being maintained. The way I see it, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight spaces being removed and not replaced. Is that correct?
Correct. There's thirty spaces remaining.
There's thirty-eight spaces currently on the, on the plan, and it's being decreased. Yet there's more square footage in the building, more classrooms. Eventually, that seems like that is gonna be problematic to me. And I'd like to know what the square footage of the building is, so that I can even determine, you know, how does that fit in with what our regulations say for parking requirements?
Let me speak for a second, Fred. You are preparing comments back to applicant
I've already prepared.
reference to the questions and concerns as it relates to our current site development regulations and our zoning ordinance. It's up to them to take a look at those, correct? And see if they can apply these economically to the project or whether it's worthwhile to. And they can answer those questions at this board level if they wish. Having said that, all right, I would certainly think that both the Public Works Department and you, Brian, would give a list of what I consider, what you consider to be the problematic areas based upon the discussion this evening and the ordinances we have in place. Organize a meeting between the applicant and the, yourself, discuss these issues to see if they can be answered or rem, remedied. And that this board would like answers back to that at our next meeting. Not our next meeting, but at a scheduled meeting where they have an opportunity, if they wish, to tell us again what they might have done to improve their plans based upon our comments and observations, both in the public sector and through the planning and Department of Public Works. Does that seem reasonable?
Totally reasonable.
Megan?
I just, I forgot to ask a question earlier. I don't know if it was said earlier tonight and I missed it, but do we know what the proposed budget for construction is on this site?
No, Jermaine at the moment, but we'll, I'll ask the question in a moment. Barbara, you have a technical question you wanna ask?
No, I'll let you finish.
Okay. Then I'll ask the question. What is the proposed budget for Bartlett School?
Uh, the combined budget for the Violet and Maple construction budget is around twelve million. Maple outweighs Bartlett. And I can't recall the specific numbers for each of the two.
So it's somewheres between total twelve million plus or minus.
It's, you know, five and seven or something like that.
Okay. All right. John?
Looking at this, because I've never seen this when buses come in here, but the proposal for the buses, are they leaving out a back entrance?
As they are presently.
Presently, they are.
Yeah, that's not changing. That's
That's not changing. Another question of the, is the, is the, this is a one-way entrance in here and a one-way exit, obviously. Is that entrance changing at all? It's, that's where the entrance is now. And about how far, do you have the distance of that new, that front drive?
About a hundred and forty feet, John?
Yeah, a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty feet.
I have an easy question for you. At the exit of the drop-off exit area, there says it's a stop bar. What's a stop bar?
It's just the line on the, the pavement, the stop line.
It's not a curb, it's painted.
Right, it's a painted line stop.
Not a speed bump, Mark. Any other questions, Barbara?
I guess if we're, I have a little concern about getting information back, because I know people have warrant articles to do and public hearings to do, and quite honestly, I don't know that any of that is gonna fit to get, I mean, and I think maybe the warrant article will proceed from the school board's standpoint regardless of comments back. But I think that needs to be, you know, worked out, because I think they proceed on a warrant schedule pretty, pretty soon now. I think things have to be done. I have to say that I think questions about square footage and parking spaces are pretty elementary. And I'm a little surprised that you don't have square footage numbers for Bartlett, and I, and I hope I'm not gonna hear that from Maple Ave. Because I suspect that to get all of these comments together, those numbers would be needed for Brian to do a calculation. Now, I understand that the school is sort of exempt from regulations, but that's what we're trying to deal with. And again, in, in this very old woman's memory, I can tell you that parking, every time this building has come before the planning board for any sort of work, parking has been a major issue. And I drive by there every day, and I don't see a lot of empty parking spaces. As a matter of fact, I see parking spaces that aren't really parking spaces getting used. So, you know, Brian, I understand you're going to be getting square footage and parking spaces, but if we're adding six teacher station, and I'm not gonna get into the merits and why you're doing this plan, I'm not gonna go there. But if you're adding six teacher stations, and I know somebody's gonna tell me this is already stuff that's being done in closets and now they're gonna have more room, I would expect part of the response to be, what is, what is the number of staff there? Because not only do you have staff there, you have parent volunteers coming in every day. And I mean, this is not, you're unfortunately sitting there as the planner and the school board with the information, so. You know, my kudos for you for wearing all those hats. Because I think that's pertinent in, in regards to any review of this plan. And I mean, I understand why the parking spaces have gone and there really isn't any other place to put them. So I don't think we're ever gonna hear about more than thirty parking spaces. But I think that information is something that people should have.
Barbara, it's noted, if you, if you go back to the school impact fees, there's a little table in here that says square footage of Violet Elementary School as it exists is around twenty-two thousand square feet.
Right, but if I look at that table, I start looking at enrollments that aren't changing, and you don't want me to look at this table while we're having that discussion.
Okay, fine, then I won't. But I, I, a fair guess would be it's under thirty thousand square feet in total with the new additions. Remember, we're tearing down some of the twenty-two to build a new addition. So I'd say somewheres around thirty.
And they're not going from one story to two? It's gonna stay the same?
The addition is two stories in the back.
The addition is two stories. The existing building is two stories.
But the footprint that's being increased is two stories. That's what that means.
That's right. That's right.
All right. Members of the board, I still haven't closed the public hearing. I'm gonna give the public one last chance. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. It's the board's pleasure. I don't mind a, a progress of work. I'd like to give a consensus vote as to whether that's what the board wants to hear or they want, don't wanna hear it again. One or the other. Leave it up to staff to resolve the issues. Would you like to know what those issues are beforehand to see how they might have been addressed? Your call, not just mine.
I mean, I think the reality is, we raised the issues, that they have the right to do the plan as they deem fit. They came here for input. They've got it. I don't know what else we'd hear from them.
Well, I'd always like to give the applicant a second opportunity to work with staff, especially Megan and Brian, to further a, uh, assault of resolve, because I think with input, resolution does happen from time to time. And let them have that opportunity, and if they wish to come back and present that, results of that, I'd like to give them the opportunity. I think the board should give them the opportunity. Without talking about whether we feel the liability, this project is one way or the other.
Well, follow-up question for members of the public who are here, both for this and Bartlett, because I'm assuming we're gonna have the same discussion at the end of the
Yes.
the Bartlett disc.
Yes.
You know, the issue with bringing them back, I think, would require a date certain. And you'd need to make a determination as to whether that then becomes another public hearing. I mean, you've closed the public hearing, so quite honestly, I don't know whether you would need to renotice a new public hearing if you had another session with them to present information on this.
I don't think we have to reopen the public hearing to get further information. Unless you feel different, unless the board feels differently. I'll recognize anybody that sits in the audience and wishes to speak. You know that.
That's good.
Yeah? Mark, John?
What plan do we have for input from the abutter to, to address his concerns? Is that, is that part of this? Is this something that we need to also make sure that the abutters are not adversely affected by this?
That's true, but he, he'll still have several opportunities to speak and reference this project. If the school deliberative session, if it's on the warrant, he can send correspondence to the, to the board. And it'll be heard and read into the record. I'm sure there's some other opportunities available to the public. And if he was here at the next meeting and wanted to speak, I don't think I've ever denied anybody the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Haven't you made me be quiet a couple of times?
I have this for you. Can we stop the discussion on Bartlett School and move on to Maple Avenue School? Thank you, this gentleman, for his comments this evening.
Will there be another meeting on this, in front of the board?
I suspect, the only reason it might be is that there's some issue that the Public Works and the planning come back to the board and suggest that we need to see it again.
Will we be notified again?
On the courtesy, I would say yes.
Well, it's for-
Not necessary, because it's not a public hearing. I understand, you're going to tell me that.
Well, I want to make sure Brian understands what he's supposed to do, because I wasn't clear at all from that. So what, I think what I just heard you say was that you're not planning on having another formal presentation, that the comments that they received tonight from the board members, along with those from DPW, you would hope that they would work with DPW and Brian to address, and that Brian is going to let us know if there's a need to come back to us on anything, or if we ask him to come back. But otherwise, we're expecting those discussions to occur offline, so to speak, and for them to address it in their plans.
Correct.
Without coming back, and Brian may just, maybe for informational purposes, will bring us what they come up with back, but right now, you're not planning on scheduling another presentation?
That is correct.
And typically, if there's not a public hearing scheduled, then we wouldn't send out notices to any other parties.
But the members of the public could call the planning office to find out if there have been any further meetings or plans done, and come in and look at them right here in the plant, at the planning office, right?
Yes.
Okay.
If it does come back to us, it will be on our agenda also. It will be included on an agenda, so that agenda is posted in the town hall also. So there is some avenues for that notification to be made.
And online on the calendar.
So I think, hopefully that would protect the interest of the public. Thank you. Would you like to move on to Maple Avenue? Take a couple minutes if you want. I know Barbara doesn't want to, but take 30 breaks, so we're going to keep on moving.
The program intentions of this school are much like those at Bartlett.
Thanks.
Presently, on-site, is a large modular structure that is the home of several classrooms. That will be removed, that's right along Maple Street, and replaced with teaching stations within the building, and that's that wing that you see, the large wing that you see colored in orange at the juncture of the two wings of the school, the existing wings. The other piece about this school was the consolidation of administrative offices and addressing security and vehicular and people flow control to the building and on the site. So the present bus loop was shortened just a little bit to accommodate a wing off the front of the multipurpose wing. That will be the entrance that all publicly use. Immediately to their right, when they enter the building, will be the administrative offices, secretary, principal, vice-principal, nurse, counselor, et cetera. They can then proceed into the rest of the school. So those are the two primary purposes of the work here. And then, I guess we'll lead right into site considerations as a result of that work.
So again, there is a separate building up front, and they do have classrooms in that building, right? Fred, there's classrooms in this front building?
Right.
So those classrooms are being moved in. There's also a storage trailer that will be removed too, as part of this. So we're removing those two exterior buildings. We are, on this side, on this site, we are doing a little bit more regrading, because the additions do encroach a little bit more into the parking lot. So removal of these two buildings, we are cutting into this pavement a little bit with this, the new addition, and cutting into, this is a sand playground area, so we are cutting into that a little bit. This is what the maintenance would look like. So like Fred said, we are shortening the bus loop right here. This is your bus, this is currently your bus circulation, we're just shortening it slightly for that new building addition. Currently, this is your parent drop-off area. That is basically staying the same, but we're widening the sidewalk slightly for basic, correct me if I'm wrong, Fred, but it's for emergency situations to make sure that the kids can fit on that sidewalk. The other thing we're doing is we're adding a couple more spaces up front and connecting, there isn't a sidewalk that connects to Maple, the Maple Ave sidewalk, so we are providing that connection now. The other thing we are adding is parking spaces along the north side. So on this site, I'm happy to say we're adding spaces, not taking out spaces, so we're not adding too many more, we're adding, there's a net increase of, I think, four spaces, but at least it's four spaces that we didn't have before, and that's because of this area in here. One of the issues that they do have on-site right now, one of the drainage issues, is with the sand playground area. The sand playground area is a raised area, it's above, it's above the pavement elevation here. So what happens is in your rainstorms, the sand does wash into the drainage system, so you get a lot of sand accumulation in the catch basin down here and around it, and some sand accumulation on the outfall of that pipe there. So one thing that we did try to do is provide somewhat of a buffer between the sand playground and the pavement. So now, here, there's a landscaped island to try to catch some of that sand, sand runoff. So this landscaped island just has very low-growth junipers. We are very limited to what we can plant there, because we can't have anything with dairies, being an elementary school, and we need to have it somewhat low-growth so that, one, it can be maintained, and two, you don't have kids hiding behind them and stuff like that. So we did keep that low-growth, ground-covering spread of junipers. The other thing we're doing, currently, this is all pavement in here, so this space in here really didn't make sense to keep pavement, so we have removed the pavement in here and created a little landscaped area. We had to be careful with this, because it's not going to get a whole lot of sun, because it's in between the buildings. So we did plant some species that are shade tolerant, and will be able to, and are drought resistant, too. A couple of comments that Megan and I were talking about earlier is, one of the things that they'd like us to do is pull back this island for snow, for snow plowing issues. So we are going to look at doing that, pulling back that island. And there are two existing catch basins, one here and one here, that we probably, most likely, will have to replace anyways, because we are tying into. We have a catch, new catch basin, new closed drainage system to treat, to collect the runoff here. Those will both be deep-sump catch basins. And then, because we're tying into this one, it will most likely have to be replaced, because it's not a pre-catch structure, so it'll be difficult to core into it. Same with this one, we're connecting our new roof drains. The existing roof drains go there, we will be connecting a new line for the roof drains into that one, and a new catch basin over here. I do realize that you had a comment on there regarding the ice, this icing, so we did add a catch basin in the new plans over here. So most likely, those will be replaced with deep-sump catch basins. We have notified, we do realize that there are, there is sediment in there, so that will be part of the construction, too, is to remove the sediment from this swale and the existing drainage systems. We are proposing a couple more street trees along Maple Ave. I believe that was another comment. And we are looking at somewhat, removal of some of these trees in here. The school actually owns about 60 to 70 feet over here, so we are looking at removal of some of these trees for additional snow storage there. As far as regrading, drainage paths are staying the same. This does sheet flow towards, towards the swale that runs along here, and this does sheet flow toward, into the landscaped island and then follows that path. So those paths are staying the same, but we are regrading them slightly so that, for one, we have existing, we have an existing handicap space down here, and then we have a not-so-compliant ADA, not-so-compliant pavement slope to get to the main entrance, the ADA entrance, which is up here. So that's one of the things we did do, we changed the handicap space up to this entrance, which is ADA accessible, and made the slope compliant with ADA guidelines, too. So that was another important thing that we had to do. Other than that, if you have any questions?
There is one more.
Oh, sorry.
There is some standing water, some runoff issues, just off of this existing driveway that now runs back into the playground, and we'll be taking care of that as well with construction of swales to run into this rivulet.
Did you want to say anything about the oil?
Oh, yes, there's an existing oil tank, dates to 1989, I believe, and that will be removed and replaced in compliance with current standards.
Is that an above-ground tank or below-ground?
Below-ground.
Below-ground tank. That's going to be replaced below-ground again?
Fred, is the new entrance by the gym, is that also going to be handicap accessible there, too?
Yes.
So there actually is two.
That's why we've located a couple of-
That one was actually handicap accessible, you could get into that, but the other one wasn't compliant at all.
Okay.
But the new one, both of them will be ADA compliant.
So both entrances will be accessible?
Both entrances will be accessible. This is the entrance that will be used 99% of the time.
Members of the board, have a question, start with you, Barbara?
Is that blue thing in the green a brook?
Back in here?
Mm-hmm.
At times.
Well, is it considered a seasonal brook or not? What is it? Because I need to tell you, when I read the DPW comments, and again, you're the engineers and wearing both hats, when I read the comments and I look at the pictures, and I see the maintenance that has not occurred on this site, I have to question how anybody would propose to expand use of this site. And that, I'm not saying that what you haven't done is inappropriate for what you've been doing, but from a planning board perspective, we're constantly faced with an issue of, you know, how are you going to follow up things, and I understand you're here for advisory comments, but I need to tell you, that's what just comes out loud and clear. So I want to know whether that's a seasonal runoff, whether that's a brook, because my recollection is, as I drive down by that school, that's going pretty much all the time. And you have major runoff issues on this site that, it sounds like you've addressed some of the comments, by new catch basins and stuff. I don't know whether two and three or what you did, or whatever. So I guess that's my question in regards to the plan and the drainage, and maybe it's more a question for Megan, because I, you know, I know you don't have to pay attention to rules, but-
Well, from long-term consideration, you can remember the one that's on, the first one you cross on Maple Ave is a drainage that goes all the way over to Spring Street, and we addressed when we had a little subdivision lot line up there, and all the water comes out of that hillside, and the one behind the school goes back underneath Maple Ave and continues up hillside behind that apartment complex that's up there. It is pretty wet and rocky in there, and I am assuming that's a natural drainage area that may be wet whenever there's a rain. It's wet now.
Well, everything's wet.
We didn't have any rain last night.
Mr. Chair-
Yes, Brian?
I will say that it's shown on our GIS as a defined surface water, and so, you know, the Wetland Surface Water Conservation District typically would apply in that case. 100 feet is what the requirement is of any impacts to that, and, you know, anything within that typically requires either a waiver from the board or a variance from the zoning board. And this is pretty close to that brook, so, you know, I put it in my comments that the Conservation Commission should weigh in on that.
And we will, in a moment.
On both sides, on both sides. On the, the lower one also is well-drained, okay?
Well, I'm assuming I'm not-
Carlos, do you have an observation?
Well, yeah, we do have, and it is a brook. It flows most of the time. I've walked the halls of the school many, many hours, helped to build the sand playground and all the other stuff, and watched the kids enjoy the brook. And it runs most of the year, certainly anytime there's any significant rainfall, it runs. And if you recall, when we did the development, I can't remember, that goes up the steep hill with the Grand Canyon cut up through, yeah, that extension, we had to address the drainage structures under the street there to accommodate that. So, yeah, it runs pretty heavily most of the time. And this plan shows an increase in impervious surface area, and all of it moving closer to the brook. And so the Conservation Commission has a concern about that. And it is within the surface water district, so that's a concern. And just a general comment, I think it's unfortunate, both with this Maple Ave project and the Bartlett project, that, you know, we've got what they call teachable moments here. You know, we've got an opportunity to provide teachable moments to children of an age where they need to be taught this stuff. Elementary school kids are where we need to teach and instill upon them proper development, the proper way to develop in our community. And yet, we're not doing it here. We're throwing it all to the wind and saying, we're just going to add more pavement. We're not going to consider modern technologies, we're not going to consider all of the other issues that we normally consider in good planning. And so we're losing that teachable moment for children when it really needs to be instilled at that early an age, that, you know, we as a community ought to be looking at these opportunities to provide improvements to some of the areas on our landscape that aren't necessarily what they should be. So that's more of a comment in general than it is to the plan specific, but, I mean, I think that's unfortunate. And once again, I think we're saying, you know, do as I say, not as I do. You know, we're going to make, we're going to make comments, we've seen it before, we've seen it with other municipal projects, we saw it with the Glen Lake School, we even saw it with the water precinct building. You know, we make all these comments, none of them get taken into consideration, and that's unfortunate. But that's the way it's set up, and that's the way the law reads, so we have to live with it.
No, we don't.
We've heard about nuts and, it's been a good meeting.
Okay. I checked that comment. Simone?
Well, I mean, the building is there right now, the dark brown, that's the current structure, right?
Yes.
So the only thing they were looking to add was the additional parking on the side, right?
Additional parking up here.
Plus the building addition.
Two pieces of a building.
The building addition is taking place on impervious surface now.
Right.
We are cutting into-
You are expanding the impervious out by that addition.
Slightly, yeah.
Slightly, yeah.
You are expanding the, the, the closeness to the brook of the pavement where you put the additional in there.
Right here.
Yes.
There's a sliver of increased impervious surface. And then these, uh, eight tent spaces up here. I'll give it a count.
Okay. But in most cases, it's severe enough that we would've had some kind of drainage considerations, I believe. Mark?
No comment.
John?
No comment.
Phil?
Uh, just a question from Brian. Is there a TRC plan for this, for these two projects?
Not right now. I would've liked to have actually had it done prior to this and so, um, so that I could have, we could've had some of these discussions with them prior to, you know, getting to the, to the planning board tonight. Um, and, you know, I think going forward, you know, it'll still sort of act as a TRC if, if we do sit down and meet with them and discuss some of these comments. Um, but today it hasn't been scheduled. And I think, you know, I, I still think that'll be important for us to, to meet with them and, and do that. But, um, I just had hoped that it had been, it would've been done prior to coming here. That way, we could've been able to answer some more of these questions. But-
If, just a follow-up on that, or just a comment?
Yes, sir.
So, Brian is aware, if you do have it, uh, several years ago, we tried to address some of the, uh, traffic issues with pickups and drop-offs, uh, up Maple Ave in the front here. So, there's a, a flow that, there was an ordinance that was created in conjunction with the, uh, school for that. And there's a little bit of work being done up there, and I have no idea how that's affecting anything. So, I think it's just appropriate that at least we be, has a, is aware of this and knows this and just to see if there's any, it has any impact on it or anything needs to be changed.
The police department did provide comments, and I actually included that in my memo to the, to the applicant. Um, it was just a couple of comments. One wa- one was that they just wanted to see some more additional parking, at least five more spaces, uh, because they'd seen some recent-
They park on the street.
-violations of parking with, you know, events the school has. Um, which leads me to think, you know, even more, how can Bartlett get away with only thirty spaces when this is like seventy-something spaces and-
It's a difference in enrollment from five hundred to what, two hundred?
There are two hundred students at Bartlett, there are five hundred students at-
Okay, so there's a difference in the size of the school.
Yeah.
Okay, well, um, that helps.
And to go a little bit further on the circulation issue that he was talking about, and I did talk to Megan about this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Megan, that was to make the circulation go this, to come up and-
That's the way it used to go, but I believe there's signage now that forces them up and through Smith Ave and down so that all the cars stack on Maple Ave. Several years ago, I remember being part of the Highway Safety Committee meetings back when it was discussed. And what I remember is that there was huge backups out on Elm Street and traffic jams. And so, I believe some signage was proposed, and I don't remember exactly what signs, that restricted, I think, a right turn movement in. And it forced you to, and they must've sent notices out to all the parents, so everyone, you know, understood the new traffic circulation. But everyone has to go out to the library around Smith Ave and down so that there's much more stacking room on Maple Ave now, and you reduce the congestion out on Elm Street.
I've been out there for four or five years, cause my kids went to school there.
And you're getting a nod yes from the principal out there, so I guess that's-
Yeah.
So, my, I, I guess-
Yes, Brian.
Part of my confusion in, in my notes, I said that I was confused about circulation on the site is, um, so are they going in on that top driveway and coming down and, and then looping back out? Because I see a stop bar that goes all the way across on both of those driveways. And I just wasn't sure if it was one-way on both of those.
That's my mistake. It, it really should be, cause this is the end of the loading zone right there. So, that should be removed, and my car should be parked the other way around.
Okay.
That was my mistake, sorry about that.
All traffic comes, originates up above, travels south on Maple, turns left on the Maple, is all one-way, and leaves the same location that the buses do.
Megan, I apologize, I-
You do get tickets when you make the right-hand turn into the driveway. I know.
Did you get one of those tickets?
Cause I didn't see the sign. Yes?
A comment, um, I noticed that it was stated that they own fifty or sixty feet and that there was some discussion about cutting down trees to deal with snow storage. Um, I think you probably, I would suggest coming up with a different solution, but we'll hear from public comment on that, but, you know. Well, I, I knew, I'm just saying it again, cause I did hear you say that. And, um, I'm not sure what that area would add for the issue you have. So, I mean, that can be considered in your, your further discussions, but-
Well, most of that area is low. And, um, there is a culvert underneath, um, Maple Ave and, um, storm runoff that travels east.
Correct. Goes through their property and through the adjacent property, then goes under the road before you get to the, uh, power station.
Right, so that little panhandle, that little bib is owned by the school district, although the neighbor mows it.
Okay. Um, I would like to open it up to public, any members of the public, we should speak about this application. I'll start with a gentleman in the front row. Please identify yourself.
Yes, Rod Stark, I am butt on the east side of this property. Um, the brook that everybody is wondering about is the rushing, blushing brook. It's always been the rushing, blushing brook, and it runs, well, they don't really show it here, but that's it. We've got it hidden pretty well in the trees. And, and this is where it enters my property. And my concern is that it looks to me like this additional parking up here and this additional pavement and regrading is pushing, it will end up pushing a lot of drainage into the brook. There's another, there's another place that prop- that water drains off this property, and that's down here at the corner of the property, um, where it goes into a culvert and under the road and into the brook. And my issue is that, um, with this additional parking, there'll be a lot of additional salt and oils, which will enter the water stream and come down through. And I built a, I built a pond down here, which I've tried to stock, um, with trout. But they don't do well with all the stuff that comes down this brook now, and that's not gonna help. So, that's a concern I have quite frankly. Um, so I'd, I'd like to know if this additional drainage, which is sure to, to come about from these improvements, will be going down this way through the site or that way through the site? And the other comment which I, which I'd like to make, and it doesn't have anything at all to do with this, it just has to do with, um, policing the schoolyard. Um, I have been after the school for as long as I can remember to get the kids not to throw their trash into the brook, because it comes down into the brook and into the pond, and it strangles the fish, believe it or not. You get caught in the, in the plastic bags. And so, once in a while, the school will put up trash cans. But they don't, they don't ever put any, anybody out there to enforce the, um, you know, the rules in terms of maintaining your trash. So, that's just a general bitch and moan. But I, I am very concerned about this drainage, so if somebody could explain where this water's gonna go and what it's gonna contain, that would be very helpful to me.
One of the answers to that question, there's no treatment of this drainage, is there? Before it enters the brook, not at all?
And right now, right now, there's nothing.
Okay.
And, and the proposed, there'll be at least sumps.
Yeah, but you know, if you came to this board with a public project, you'd be jumping up and down.
Right.
So, why aren't you jumping up and down?
One is the cost.
You're the down engineer for these guys.
Yeah, one is the cost. We, we have a very limited cost on our site improvements.
We're paying for that too. Okay, so, I, I would think you'd do it wholly, but that's my comment for you.
Um-
Megan, you had a quick question, please.
I was just gonna make a quick statement about cost. I mean, one thing I did really quickly before I got here was I took all of the proposed drainage they had, plus the proposed drainage I would like, which is just some of the basic, basic stuff. And I came up with about, just under fifty thousand. And the numbers I had before I came for this school were about nine and a half million, which it might be a little less than that, but that's a half a percent of the proposed cost of the site. You know, for, for the dr- for just some of the, and, and even if you, you know, doubled it, you know what I mean, to put some underground storage or, you know, I, I guess I'm not, I'd have to look into cost for what underground storage is. But I guess I'm just trying to say, it's a fair cost in the total overall budget of the site that would improve water quality and help with, you know, drainage issues and so.
And as far as the budget goes, unfortunately, in renovations, and I see it a lot in Manchester too, the site budget is a lot, even on private, um, developments, the site budget is a lot less than your, um, your actual building, um, costs. So, I do see that a lot in, in my renovations that I do in Manchester. So, I mean, we're allotted a certain amount, and it's really not a lot for the, the site. Um, as far as answering the drainage question and where it's going, there is an existing catch basin here. It's the one that, um, we were saying that we're most likely going to replace with a deep sump catch basin. Um, that does have a pipe going to the brook. Um, we'll be tying into that one. And then there's this catch basin goes down, so this area would go to that catch basin. Um, this little area will go to this runoff area, that catch basin that goes, that outlets into that swell.
That swell goes back to the brook.
Right. Well, it's a little bit to the br-.
Question, Mr. Chair? Uh, I just have a further follow-up here, is that, um, is a building committee on this project, correct?
I believe so.
What input do they have on this project? And is a mem- any member of the building committee here at this meeting tonight? I don't see any, thank you. Brian?
Can I, can I-
There have been regular meetings of the building committee. They are fluent with the program and, you know, with the budgets that have been prepared by our general contractors, so.
Can I mention that just before I came to the meeting, um, well, I, I had gotten a comment from the police department about possibly putting parking along the south side of the, of the parking lot there? The very south side, the property line?
It sounded like they wanted a plane in here?
No, I think he was talking about squeezing the, the width of that landscape island down to-
Nothing.
Nothing almost. And then, um, you know, putting some angled parking on the south side, just like you have angled parking going the other direction. You know, use a skinnier driveway because you have angled parking. You, you, you only need like an eighteen-foot wide, um, driveway, and then you can get some additional parking on that side. And then you could eliminate all those, and those parking up to the north where, um, you're having to add those anyway, and you've got all the pavement there. There's enough width, I scaled it, and it looks like there's enough width.
There may be enough width for that, but there's not enough width for your, uh, bus turnaround.
Bus turnaround if it gets you.
Yeah.
Well, but do you have to do it all the way across on that edge? Or can you just do the first little small portion and let them swing out?
We could possibly do a couple of spaces, but this isn't just the bus, this is the fire safety too. So, um, I, we may be able to add a couple of parallel spaces along there, but, um-
There's also an issue of grading, um, with that island. That island does pick up some drop from-
It does, yeah.
-one lane to the other.
Yeah, they're not at the same elevation.
Right.
Well, again, I mean, even without decreasing the size of that island, I scaled it and there was about thirty-six feet between the, the end of the parking stalls and where that line is. So, I mean, that's the eighteen feet you need for your stalls, plus your eighteen feet you need for your driveway. So, I mean-
If you go up there on a busy day, Brian, you'll find a row of cars parked there.
Yeah. And this is basically what you're-
Why not make some stalls and get rid of that other?
Well, because, the fire department would probably have a hard time with that, because this is basically, if you put a truck turning, and this is just approximate, um, your, your bus or your fire truck is going to come out, and then it's gonna have to pull in to make that curve. So, you're looking at maybe a couple of parallel spaces here, which we could stripe if, if, if that's what you wanna do. You know, that's probably two, maybe three spaces.
Just remember, you own a piece of their property that's a hundred and thirty, fifty feet long. They would allow you to put another whole row for a hundred and fifty feet on that green space.
This one?
It would require some, uh, earth movement.
Yep.
Retaining walls or something.
And there's a very small site budget.
We'll look at it.
I'm accustomed to spending money.
So, are you talking about removing these spaces and putting them here? Is that your recommendation?
I see.
I, I just was looking at if it's gonna cost less. I mean, that might be a way to save some money. And then also, that might decrease the impacts to the brook, like the, the gentleman was asking for. I don't know if that, I don't know how much that would decrease the impact of the brook, but it might.
And just to, to follow up, the reality is, nobody's gonna park up there, because the entrance to the building is way on the other side. So, they're gonna be stacking up and doing their illegal parking thing that they do now.
There's actually, there is an entrance here, so, I mean, I'd see that being faculty. It's not gonna be parents or anything.
But I, I was just gonna ask the question. I'm, I'm Joe Public, where do I, what door do I go in?
You have to go, you go in the new canopy.
The new entrance.
So, if I come there to visit the school, is there gonna be a parking space there for me?
We can ask them that they put a space for you on the plan.
Alan's space.
We have to dump.
This would be an administrative issue, but we could certainly ask the school district to dedicate these to faculty, uh, and whatever we need down here, and provide visitor parking.
I think that's the answer to the question, right? Phil?
Yeah, um, trying, looking at, or trying to figure out where that brook is that's in the trees, up there by the new parking area, yep, right?
Sorry, losing my balance.
Yep, right up in, right up there, further up, if you bring your pen all the way up to the edge of the parking lot, right, right in there, what is the distance between the pavement, the new pavement, proposed pavement, and the, what appears to be the edge of the blue line, which is a-
Probably about thirty feet.
Is this down here, scale thirty feet?
Yes.
Okay, because when I measured from that, it seemed to be about a little bit, quite a bit less.
He's looking right here. Looking right there. It's about ten feet.
Right at the point.
Right at the point, maybe five or ten feet.
Oh, where the existing, yeah, that's existing pavement.
Yeah, so it's pretty close to the brook. The pavement's pretty close to the brook in one o-
Oh, the existing pavement is-
Sorry, right here.
Right here.
This is existing pavement, we're not touching it.
Oh, no, 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 I'm here, this gray, the corner up here.
Next to the green car, go to the corner to the right of the green car.
Here?
Yeah.
He's talking about right here, which is about thirty feet.
That's about, about twenty, I believe.
Probably about twenty.
Okay, um. Is that, uh, what do we usually do though, when we have paving that close to running brook?
We don't allow it.
Yeah, we don't allow it.
Right.
Well, one of the things that, this does slope away from the brook. It's not going to slope towards the brook there.
I guess the only, only question I, I had, and I understand that, but, but being that close to a brook, um, I guess the only question that I have or comment is, is there any way to put what comes off of that area into a pre-treatment before it goes through?
We can definitely bring it up to the committee.
That would be part of the section that you were talking about would be caught in a catch basin? Arguably with the slope, that would end up going behind the existing building there on what is currently the light gray?
Yeah, we can definitely ask if-
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems to me, in lieu of the fact that we normally don't even allow that, that trout do need clean water. Might be- Might be a good idea.
What about eliminating two spaces? How many are there? One, two, three?
You need all you can get on that school. Having lived with
There's eleven.
Having to park downtown and walk over to the school.
The short answer is, for all intention and purposes, all of the runoff from this school goes to the brook.
Right.
One way or another, whether it goes through catch basins with sumps or whether it goes through swales or whatever, it all goes to the brook.
Untreated.
Untreated. That's the short answer.
Okay. Megan?
At some point, I wanted to put up my quick drawings, just to explain some of my concerns unless, from my memo, unless you don't think it's necessary.
I will definitely have you up here next before we entertain anybody else from the public. How's that sound?
Sure.
All right. You have the floor, Megan. You'll, you'll get a chance to speak. Wait a minute, I haven't forgotten the rest of the audience out there.
Yep.
But Megan, Megan is a public works town engineer. She may be able to answer some of your questions or provide you with information, just a question you might have.
All right, I don't talk, 'cause I live right next door to it.
I just did two quick things at work today, just so, I know sometimes it's helpful to have highlighted stuff here. But, I mean, a lot of this has already been said, so I'll try and be quick and not repeat a lot of stuff. But we definitely had some drainage concerns on the site. I tried to color, the green is the existing drainage that's out there now. The yellow is the proposed drainage, the shaded parts of the, you know, new building. And here's the brook out back. I'll just jump over to here to just give you a bigger picture of the drainage in the whole area. This is that little brook that goes to Mr. Stark's pond over here, which goes under what we call the Elm Street box culvert and then flows right out to the river here. There's another swale on the south side that comes from the whole Spring Street area and up above. A lot of this originates up near Smith Road. There's two culverts that you can see. The upper one comes down on the north side of the property and this one comes down on the south side of the property down here. So, these are definitely, there's two areas I have of concern related to the drainage flow and on the school site, and that is down here, this path, the lower path of drainage, and then the closed system that outlets here to this, to the other brook. I, I put some pictures in when I did my inspection. But over here, there's an issue over here. I was actually happy to see that the school owns a chunk of this because this is a very flat area that doesn't drain very well at all. And I would love to see the school get in there and retune that. The swale has lost, you know, all shape. It's kind of filled in with leaves and debris and trees and overgrowth. And so, it's almost becoming like a wider wetland because it's not flowing in a path. And, you know, it's, it's flattened out so much that it's, the, I believe the property owner recently had called us and complained that the whole area is just very, very wet. His whole backyard is, you know, turning into a soggy wetland. So, you know, I'd like the school to look at retuning that, redefining the swale, you know, and revegetating it so it functions, you know, like a treatment swale down here. The other reason to do that, I had mentioned about the snow storage. Right now, the snow, a lot of the snow goes over here, right against a fence that's right on the property line. And I believe the fence isn't even owned by the school. I think it's owned by the property owner, totally leaning over and damaging that. When I talked to the guys who plow, they said ideally it'd be nice to plow this straight down into a larger area here, instead of trying to shove it all down here where there really is no room for it anyway. Unfortunately, no matter where you put it, it's going to be near water. Do you know what I mean? I, I know it's not ideal to clear and store snow over here near this side of the swale, but really, we're doing the same thing over there and we don't even have the room to do it and we're damaging, you know, the abutting property. So, it'd be nice to clear, kind of create a shelf of, you know, green space right there to put some, some snow storage there. So, that's something I'll be bringing up again. I mean, we can make these comments. I don't know how much we'll be able to get done, but it's just something I was looking at over here. The other area down here in the corner, this has totally filled in with sand. I, I provided some pictures of that. I think it's between the catch basins and the playground running off, but you can't even see the outlet of the pipe. It's completely buried and it's totally filled in with sand. So, I would definitely be looking for the school to clean that out, reestablish it with vegetation so it can function like a treatment swale. Because there's no, there's no room really for a lot of treatment. We have very little option. So, you know, if we could fix this so that it'll help treat this salt runoff from the snow and stuff like that, and then treat this over here would be great. The only other thing you can really do is maybe some storm scepters. Those, those are like catch basin units that can function to get some of the sand and grit and things out like that. I don't really know, you know, what, how many options they have because they have a small area and they don't have room to do any treatment swales really up here. So, I, I don't know if that's something they've looked at or possibly some underground storage, like we mentioned over at the other site. You know, would be nice, but anything like that would be good. The, the proposed drainage that they have is two twelve-inch pipes going into an eight-inch pipe. So, I, in this, I just saw the new stuff today, so that's not a comment on my thing to, I had, I think I mentioned replacing it, but now that I'm seeing two twelves going into an eight, even more so, I'd like to see this pipe replaced. And then down here, this is a corrugated metal pipe, which most likely, likely has rusted right through and collapsed, but I can't even see up it, so I don't know. So, I'd be looking to have that pipe replaced also. Down in here, one of the issues I mentioned is there's two catch basins there now that we can't even tell how they, we assume how they tie together, but you can't see anything because everything's full. They're proposing to remove them, but just from standing out there, it kind of looks that this area is a low point. And I'm just worried that if there isn't a catch basin left to collect that, that that might ice up. And I believe there's two entrances over there. So, I'm thinking that you should look at your spot shots from your survey, you know, and check to see if a catch basin should be in this pocket right here. So, I think, so, yeah. The CBs I mentioned to Nicole today, these are barrel block CBs. They're not precast concrete CBs. They're very shallow, they have no sumps to collect sand and stuff like that. So, ideally, they should be replaced with precast structures and full-size sumps to at least collect the sand and, and help reduce the sand that goes out.
Would you discontinue that eight-inch and run twelve out? I'll, I'll see after the off-line, the uppermost one?
Down here?
No, the uppermost one.
This, this drains this way.
Existing eight-inch.
Yeah.
Would you cut it at the pavement line? Open it up and then create a treatment swale that runs along the pavement?
Right here?
Yeah, that runs along the pavement and then out to the brook.
This is the whole sand playground. That's a, you, I mean, that's a whole playground right now of sand, this whole area right in here, I believe.
There's no room for swales.
If you, see right here? This is all a playground. It's essentially a playground right to, I don't know, let's say ten feet off the brook. There's a fence line, something like that, ten fifteen. So, the playground goes right to the edge. So, you'd be putting a treatment swale in the middle of the playground, which I guess you could do, but I don't think you want, want to be having running water in the middle of the playground area, probably, you know. You know, you could tie this into that and create one outlet where it's treated. You, you could possibly do that. You know, connect, you could put a catch basin here. You'd have to probably, you might need another one to turn and then to there so that you could eliminate that outlet, all bring it to one outlet and provide a proper treatment swale there. Again, I mean, there's a lot of scenarios of different things you could do. But I didn't really get into all that. I just kind of said, it's an issue and I'd be looking at them to bring some of that.
Any members of board got a question of Megan and what she's shown us? Seeing none, thank you.
Want me to take this down or do you?
No, it's leaving right up there for a couple minutes. Members of public, you still have an opportunity. I want to open it up to public, it's still open. Who would like to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Yes, sir?
My name is Robbie Willett. I live, actually, next door, way to Be Maple Ave. And that brook does run pretty good. My only question I got, well, a few questions, but the main one is, when you're talking about the new parking area, how close is it gonna be to the property line? Because I know there isn't much room right now between where my rocks are, that shows the property line, and where the school roads are. So, I see that coming even closer. And if that's the case, what kind of privacy is gonna happen? Because now you're gonna have to take down branches and trees to move into that area now. You know, whatever I had there for branches and trees, more than likely will be gone or very thinned out.
I think if I look at the plan, my, my guess scale is about thirty feet from your stone wall to the face of the parking.
Don't have to clear the whole entire area. We do show in this plan, the existing tree line. Wish I had a wider marker. So, this is the existing tree line here, and this is the proposed tree line.
Where's the property line?
Property line's out here.
Rock wall.
Stone wall.
There's a rock wall up at the top.
All right, okay.
So, I, I would say by the time you clear for the, for the parking, five or six feet, you're gonna have about twenty feet of existing vegetation remaining.
I think it's more than that. I think it's about forty.
Okay. My plan has a scale on it. I'm not too good at that.
Split the difference.
Huh?
Split the difference.
But I think there's enough of a vegetation, vegetative barrier there as long as it's maintained. Anybody else?
My only concern is seeing, I mean, because this is the first time I've seen the plan because, I mean, I've been busy with work, so I haven't been able to get down here.
Okay.
And, I mean, when I saw that, I'm like, whoa, boy, that's getting closer. And seeing if they're, I mean, if they're gonna be knocking down vegetation, what are they gonna do for some kind of a, a barrier or buffer between my house and the school for a little bit more privacy between, you know, with the kids or, you know, or my land?
I think it would be mostly vehicular traffic because I think the children are probably not, don't spend a lot of time at that north end of the school, between the playground and, and arriving at the school at the gymnasium door.
Except for after school when all the, when all the teenagers hang out there.
Call nine-one-one. Is there anybody else wishing to speak in reference to the application, expansion of the school? A lot of people in the background haven't said anything yet. Okay. Seeing none, members of the board? Carlos?
No.
Samuel? Mark?
No, thank you.
John? Phil? Barbara?
No.
Do you think, there's obviously been some concerns addressed this evening for the Maple Avenue School also, and comments from TPW and I'm sure Brian has some observations also. Do you want to apply the same scenario where that the staff has the opportunity to work with the proposer and see if these can be addressed? Or are we looking for something more specific? Carlos?
Well, no, you said concerned have been addressed tonight. I would say concerns have been raised tonight, whether or not they'll be addressed is yet to be seen.
I'm a positive person. But I think, and hopefully, that the, these concerns get conveyed back to your building committee to let them, the building committee have the opportunity to absorb that information and the input to see if they want to address those specifically, both from the standpoint of the discussions this evening and certainly would also avail the proposer the opportunity to come back to this board if they so desire and talk to us about the outcome of working with our staff and the Department of Public Works on some of these issues that have been raised. I think that would be a fair proposal. Any, any members of board got another concern or, or condition you, well, there's no conditions we can apply, but obviously, we can always ask. Does the applicant have any questions to the board or disclose?
Is there any way, I know that you have to vote to approve the meeting minutes, but is there any way to get a draft meeting minute just so that we can make sure that we, we have listed all of your recommendations?
I'll, I'll ask this very, oh, she's laughing already. I don't know, how soon do you turn the minutes around?
I have them done in five business days. They'll, they'll actually probably, my aim would be to have them done by Wednesday.
Even, even though they're not approved by the board, you can certainly obtain a copy.
Thank you.
They get put online right away.
Even the draft ones?
The draft, the draft ones get put online.
Okay.
They'll say unofficial.
If you don't see those, you know, expeditiously, call Brian and we'll, we'll get you copies of those.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only question. Thank you very much for playing up with the board this evening.
Thank you very much.
We've been very easy on you.
Thank you.
While we're, while they're doing that, I just want to get into our last new business item, which is map four, lot twenty-nine and thirty-one. A completeness review subdivision review hearing for proposed lot line adjustment. Marking the need of over there. Lot eight, one oh-six and ninety-four Leach Hill Road, zone conservancy. Brian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This project, as you stated, is a lot line adjustment. It's basically to move half an acre from one lot to another lot. Both of the lots are in the conservancy zone. Conservancy zone requires a five-point, five-acre minimum lot size. And so, one of the lots is only one, one acre in size currently. And so, what, what's gonna happen is the larger lot's gonna give half an acre to that and it'll become a larger non-conforming lot. But the, the applicant did go to the zoning board, actually, just this past Tuesday, and received their variances for the, for the appropriate variances that they needed to obtain in order to make their lots compliant with zoning and the zoning ordinance. And really, I mean, that's, that's the major part of this whole project. They needed to meet the approvals and then I've, I've made some recommendations as far as process to get them through the planning board for their lot line adjustment. But, and, and they've requested for a few waivers of the development regulations. I can address those really fast. One of them is a topo map. Since it's a lot line adjustment, I don't believe that a topo map is necessary. Front granite-bound monuments. I believe that's an issue for them because they, the, the property line is in a rock wall. And so, I, I think they've tried to come up with an alternative of putting the nails in the, in the rocks. Is that kind of the, the way that that happens?
Yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll let you explain it when you get up here in a minute. But, and the third one is for side lot, side lot lines to be substantially perpendicular to the roadway. That's one of the development regulations. This lot line is slightly more than perpendicular and, or slightly less than perpendicular, I guess. And so, they need a waiver on that to be able to obtain that. And the property owners sort of worked out the lines that they wanted to have. Part of it was based on how much frontage they could get or give and wanted to give and then also trying to keep the, the rear lot line at, kind of a straight line. I think that was partially how they determined where those lot lines went. But other than that, my recommendation is to, to approve the lot line adjustment after holding the public hearing and waiving the waivers and, yeah, that's it. We have a few conditions of approval, seven conditions of approval. Most of them are standard. One, one of them require, would require a submission of a wa, waiver of well radius liability since one of the existing lots has a well that's pretty close to our right-of-way. But that's nothing earth-shattering. nothing earth shattering. And then just to note their approvals on the site, site plan. And that would be it. I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you. Members of the board, can we do a quick act on items number two and three, which is the regional impact and that the, these plans are, and the applications are ready for review.
One more second.
Motion by Phil, seconded by Mark. Any discussion on that, that motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries unanimously. Now, I'm assuming there is somebody here diligently waiting patiently to speak.
My name's Bob Kilmer. My name is Bob Kilmer from Duval Survey. Representing the Perrys and the Bullbears.
What can you tell us about this and the application?
Brian covered most of it. How the, kind of ends up is Perrys had a family tragedy recently and the Bullbears helped them out monetarily. And in return, Mr. Perry agreed to give them a half an acre. He, what he did is he walked out to where their property line was, paced out and said, this is how much frontage I will give you and I'll give you a half acre of land starting from there. And that's kind of, in a nutshell.
Okay.
You know, how we're going at it.
Members of the board, have any questions of the applicant's representative? Any questions, board members? Okay. Then I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there any member in the public wishing to speak, preferences, application? Have the opportunity to speak? Seeing none? Then we'll close the public hearing. Members of the board? Resolution of any issues going around the table. Barbara?
No.
Carlos?
Nothing.
Samo?
Nada.
Mark?
No, thank you.
John?
No sir.
Phil? Seeing no comments or, are there any remaining issues or anything identified in the conditions of approval which we wish to discuss? Or any further information needs to be given? Okay? Then we also have to act on number four, which is to waive sections three-seven, three-C, seventeen, twenty-three, and thirty. Section six-B, two, and section six-C, seven. As Brian identified earlier on in his presentation, reference topographic mapping, the granite bound and the stone wall. And the, the side lot line, which is the new side lot line, which is not directly perpendicular, but not that far askew, in my opinion.
Motion to grant the waivers?
A motion by Carlos.
I had a question.
Okay, please.
In lieu of the granite bound, because of the stone wall, what was the resolution?
Well, what we're proposing is, and I don't remember what other job in town we've done it on, is we drill the hole in the rock, there's a drill hole, and we put a, what they call a mag nail. That can be found with a metal locator. And we drive that into the into the rock, so that it can be found like a, you know, granite bound with the metal plug in it, or like a rebar. So that it's, you know, at least it's
How, you know, we, we mentioned a rock and not being out there to see what is physically there, are we talking about just a, a round?
No, we're talking about, you know, basically a lot of, there is a base rocks. You know, some sections of it don't stick up off the ground, and so there's good base rocks, maybe six, eight inches showing. If not a foot, and they don't it's not like a, how do I say it, rock on top that can be knocked over. Or, you know, a plow, whatever, when they're winging something, if they hit something, it's not something that's gonna roll off the side and be lost forever. It's been done before. Some of the drill holes we found on the lot four-thirty-one had been done back in eighty-six. So they, you know, they do stay.
Yeah, I just, I just want reasonable assurance that that's something that's kind of permanent.
Yeah, they
Phil, would you
As far as the rocks, you know.
Phil, would you want an offset pin, two feet up to property line? Set?
Oh, we can
From the drill, from the drill hole, go in two feet.
But that's standard practice.
But that's pretty standard practice, I mean, I don't
Yeah, we, you know, it's, it's done, other surveyors do it, and I couldn't come up with plans like that, you know, we find them and like that.
I mean, I'm, I'm not saying what I want done. I mean, I'm not a surveyor, you know, what's in, I just I wanted an explanation of what the resolution was. With some reasonable assurance that
Right, and it's the base rock of the wall. It's, you know, it's kind of the where the, you know, they call it the base rock because they put the wall on top of that and whatever. These are pretty substantial rocks that have been there.
I mean, it's not a rock that I can go over there with a pick and shovel and unless I want it to work for three months, maybe.
Well, correct. It's not, you know, it's not anything you're gonna walk by and kick over, alright?
So, so hearing that, are you satisfied?
I'm, I'm fine, you know, I mean, that's your business, you do that, it's just that I would like the explanation.
Yep.
About what we're doing in lieu of what's required, we, we require the granite bound for
You require granite bound with a with a metal plug so it can be found magnetically in there.
Okay.
Phil, that's a
Any other questions?
Motion on the floor.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor to waive those particular sections as outlined in the, in our report and also in the recommendations. And without seeing further discussion?
No seconded it?
Yeah.
Huh?
Phil, Phil just seconded.
Right.
While you were talking.
Danny had the question at the same time. Seeing that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the waivers are granted. Now, those will have to be noted on the plan. Now, the fact that there was a variance, did that also want to be on the plan also?
That's one of the conditions of approval.
Yeah, it's number seven.
They note the variance approvals on the
So, so we closed the public hearing, we've addressed the waivers. Members of the board, what, what's our purview in terms of approval? Or disapproval? The chair is looking for a motion.
We're leaving you hanging.
If you won't, I'll make the motion. That's not my
I'll make a motion if we grant the approval subject to the conditions. As listed, seven, what are these, seven?
One through seven?
Yes, one through seven.
Second.
Seconded by, a motion by Phil, seconded by Mark. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Eric? Anything else that any member of the board wishes to bring before us this evening? Any discussion on the zoning petitions? Do we have any?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Would this be a time I could discuss this, or would that be for another?
I think it has to be publicly submitted before we can discuss it.
Okay, then it
There's a deadline, what, what deadline on petitions, Brian?
Uh, the fourteenth.
Fourteenth of this month. I will give you an opportunity at the end here to, to talk about what it is that you've, you've got your job. Are there any, how about the, the proposed zoning amendments that you've written up, Brian? Is there any board member wish to discuss any of those items? On that list while we're sitting here?
Just for a point of information.
Yes.
We had to do the notice, obviously, because our meeting is in, in another week. And so, you know, last time we met and discussed, we had sort of had to just give a general idea as to whether or not you were supportive of a certain amendment or not. And the ones that you were supportive of, I sort of took those and worded them the best that I could, and I sent that to the paper. And this is, this is the notice that went in the paper. And then I also copied to you the the planning board version, which is a tiny bit longer and you get a little bit more of an explanation of, of what the actual change is. So I just wanted to kind of explain what you had in front of you, if you
If it looked like the same thing, yes.
Yeah.
No, I thought you did actually a good, a good job on the wording on those.
What I would suggest, as long as they are of the proper context, we can change the minor wording in it if there's a word or two. Based upon the public hearing, as long as there's no substantial modification to that amendment as published.
Otherwise, we would have to hold another public hearing.
Another public hearing.
Which we could.
But we can make clerical and grammatical changes, I believe. As long as the character and the thornous of it doesn't get altered. Megan?
Is there an extra copy of the zoning changes?
Oh, I've shuffled my, I've got here so much, I don't even where it went.
Here, you can have mine, because my packets at home, so I have them, so we're at my office, so you can have those. Brian copied that for me tonight.
I, I have one question.
Yeah.
There's been a couple of times, I think it was this year, that we had site plans in front of us and we were dealing with the tractor trailers turning in from Mass Road on there with the radius, and we had the width of the driveway. And we had that issue and in the zoning ordinance, it says that we could only have the width or the curb cut if it's a two in and out, I believe. And there's no provision in there for the planning board to waive or modify that in any way. Is that something that we should look at in case we need to?
That's actually, that's actually been addressed in this. If you can look at the top of page two, you can see that language where except as otherwise approved by the planning board, and then we have the language requires a driveway of three lanes or more is crossed out.
Okay.
So that's gone. And so now we're kind of leaving it up to the planning board to be able to allow that more flexibly without having to require three lanes of, of driveway.
Yeah, and I, I apologize, I didn't see that page. When I looked, I, I only seen, see these other pages, I apologize. Okay, good.
I'm not sure I have a copy, I'm still trying to copy this.
Well, I've shuffled my stuff so much that I don't even where it is. It's in this file someplace.
And Megan was good in helping me work that
It looks like this, Mark.
Wordings from two thousand and twelve.
Yep.
At the top of it, right? Yep. For the driveway section, Megan was really good helping me get that together.
Thank you, Megan.
Gotta put a plug in for Megan every once in a while, you know, Megan.
I know, she gets, she gets abused a lot.
Chair, I do have a
My, 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 my real recommendation is, I, I read through these and I was actually impressed with trying to how Brian tried to capture all of our comments.
Oh, I thought, I did think you did a good shot.
And I would, I would suggest that each of us take the time to read these and see if there's a and, if, if, or a but that we need to change on, on any one of these or would like to discuss it at our, at our public hearing. And then if, if we've missed anything, please let Brian know, but, yes.
I just had a question.
Yes.
Seven-four-five. It says, uh, for single family and two-family dwellings, width of driveway shall not exceed twenty-five feet.
Yes.
Um, and and on seven-three-four, it says no driveway shall exceed twenty-four feet in width. What am I missing?
For two-way traffic flow.
That's just, okay.
What, when is it, when is a commercial application, when is a residential?
Right, that's, that's a commercial section only applicable to commercial driveways. So for residential driveways, it would be twenty-five.
Okay.
For commercial, it's twenty-four, unless the planning board approves it, otherwise to be wider than that.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, are we, are we discussing these now for, or do we want to wait? Where would we discuss these?
Well, these, these we've discussed
We've already discussed these.
Various, various times and whatever, and Brian's tried to recapture all of our comments and make sense of everything, and at the end, we can change minor grammatical things in this. But we can also discuss any point in here at the public hearing, because at the end of that public hearing, there's the second public hearing, we vote whether to put it on the ballot or not.
Okay.
And it's an up or down thing. It's we don't decide, it's, the planning board is seven and zero in favor, that's how it's noted on the ballot. And all of these are typically on the ballot. Although we have removed them in the past. So as a board, we can remove it from being placed on the ballot. Any one of these at any time. Up to the last public hearing.
Right.
Because we may find out that we're doing something totally wrong.
These, these ones can be removed. The petition ones that come later cannot be removed.
Cannot be removed, yeah.
So these, seven-three-four, seven-four-five, the numbers, these can be removed?
That's correct, but they do coincide with the current zoning ordinance numerical system, so you can find your reference to all these subjects in the broader category if there was something that it relates to in the current copy of the zoning ordinance.
I have a question for Brian. I didn't see it here right off, but on your original draft, you had talked about changing the required permit for structures from a hundred feet to two hundred feet. Is that in this revised one, or you, you dropped that?
The square footage size? That was a discussion we had, but it's
It, it got sort of killed by the board, so that one
Okay, good, so it's not in here.
I didn't, I didn't move that one forward.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So John, did you want to talk to the board members about the petition that you've been, been, been working on?
I do. Uh, this was based on some folks
You've got ten minutes or less.
Okay. I want to keep you on then. This was based on some discussion from folks that live between Lynchville, between Moose Club Park and Lights at one-fourteen. I made three different choices here. One is basically to change the zoning of the lots from R-S-B-O-D-two to commercial. And that's, because you've got Pernardville, you've got the from Shaw's, let's say, to Kelly Street, you've got commercial property in that area. You've got this section that is, a lot of businesses are in that section between Moose Club and one-fourteen. And then we had the county request that we rezoned their land of around five hundred acres to, I think it was Flex or commercial industrial Flex, I think that's what they wanted, or commercials, they could have other uses other than agricultural. So one proposal is to just change the existing R-S-B-O-D-two from Moose Club to one-fourteen to commercial. And those lots are spelled, are, are drawn out clearly. The other proposal is change the R-S-B-O-D-two and six residential lots in that area from Moose Club to one-fourteen to commercial, which is, which makes a lot of sense. And it also doesn't, it's not spot zoning. The other, third choice that I made was for a smaller section to be, to be changed from R-S-B-O-D-two, which leaves some of the R-S-B-two, but it separates, it goes commercial, R-S-B-two, to R-S-B-O-D-two, and then commercial again, which I really don't like that, but that's a very small, kind of an easy way to, to introduce, to see if it would work. That's not my favorite one. I actually That's not my favorite one, I actually, and the, and the consensus of the neighbors that, uh, own the properties along that corridor, actually liked the idea of, of converting the R S B O D two from Moose Club to One Fourteen, including the residential properties from One Fourteen turning onto Mast Road. Uh, there's a substantial, uh, opportunity here for development. It also allows the property owners to not only have, uh, they can live in their property, it stays as a house, it stays as their home, but in the event that they ever choose to sell or they wanna develop, it gives them another opportunity, um, uh, to market their property, and not only, the other, the other great part about this area is we have three other commercial industrial areas, one on One Fourteen, one on the, the, uh, the TIF over, uh, across from Henry Bridge, across the Irving Station, and then we have Goffstown Back Road. The problem with all of those is infrastructure is, just doesn't exist, and we talk about these for long periods of time, years and years and years, and really, they don't change. The great part about this change is it has water, sewer, uh, electricity, and natural gas. So it, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of an area that, uh, is ripe for development, and if our, if our, um, mission here is to plan for the future...
Can I, excuse me, point of order, I, I, I really think I need to say anything, something, 'cause you just talked about our mission here. Um, we have an opportunity...
As the planning board.
No, because this is not coming forward from the planning board, John. We had, as a planning board, our meetings on proposed zoning changes, and we now have a proposal, and I don't, I didn't know what you have in front of you, if, are you talking about bringing forward a petitioned article, uh, uh, I won't even say what kind of article, for twenty-twelve?
Yes.
Okay, then you were doing, then Mr. Chairman, he is doing that as an individual citizen. Our board has already had our discussions on our zoning changes, and for John to be speaking about this at the table as a planning board meeting puts him at a different footing than any other applicant who is presenting a petition for an article and has an opportunity for a public hearing. So, I under- I didn't know what he was saying, and I, you know, John had something he wanted to bring, but the minute he says, if our mission, he is not presenting that as a, as a planning board article, and the planning board will be asked to take a stand on it one way or another, but John will need to be presenting that as an individual citizen. It's just a point...
I, I will be, and I will be actually not involved in the vote of this as well.
Right, you couldn't be.
I understand that, I'm gonna remove myself from this.
I just wanna make sure anybody else who brings forward a petitioned article doesn't see you making this presentation and argue that somehow we're talking about it.
Correct, no.
And they have to wait for theirs.
I understand, no.
It's no different than inviting the county to come in here to talk about their zoning changes, and I expect a petition from them, okay? And it was without, it's because somebody came to this board, it came, it became knowledgeable that there was something somebody'd like to do. I think we have an obligation to hear that. For five minutes, I don't think it's a problem.
I didn't have any problem with it until you said "are."
I understand your point, too, and, but...
Until you said "are," that was fine.
Okay.
I just don't want anybody else to say, "You got it."
I understand, well, yeah, I understand.
We have an obligation to hear what citizens have to say, even if they're sitting here as a board member.
Well, I, I, I would suggest that there are point of orders as to how that should be conducted, but it doesn't matter anyways, and we did it in less than ten minutes anyways.
Anyways, you know, what, what, what rules do we operate by?
Allen's rules.
Thank you.
No, Allen's rules, yeah.
Allen's rules, okay.
Don't even have a Robert on the board.
No, there's no Robert on the board.
I, I did meet with Brian earlier today, and I do expect that the county is working on a proposal, based upon our discussion here. I don't know what it will be, I have no clues at the moment, but I ex- I expect that also.
I, I can also mention a couple more that I'm expecting to be coming in. Uh, one from chiropractic office, uh, it's actually, as you just get into Pinnardville, into the second little section of R S B O two area, um, he's right on the corner of, between Commercial and R S B O two, and he is gonna put a petition for changing his to Commercial. Um, and then the other one that I know of is the historic district thing on, uh, North Mast Road with the Nazar property, um, they are putting their petition in, uh, to be able to make that from the house going west, instead of including anything east of there, um, as was discussed at the planning board meeting a couple, a few months ago. So, um, you know, just wanted to at least make you aware of the other ones that are coming through, and, uh, that I'm expecting at least.
Okay.
Yeah, go from there.
Any other board member have wished, something they wish to talk about?
Motion to adjourn.
Being, I can, I thought you guys are fast. A motion to adjourn by Phil, and a second by Barbara.
Collis did it, I think.
Collis? I had my head turned the wrong way.
You usually do.
Anyway, there'll be somebody else's turn here in a few minutes. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for your patience, Sissy.